You're good to go, Mr. Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that. And again, I'll welcome everybody to our committee of the whole meeting this morning, February thirteenth. I'll call the meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest related to any matter on this agenda? Not seeing any business arising for minutes. We have a motion here regarding the Markdale Rail Trail. Counselor McQueen, would you like to move that motion? I believe that was yours, was it not?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Is there a seconder? Counselor Nielsen will second that motion. Counselor McQueen, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Warden, and good morning, County Council. And it's pretty straightforward. I did raise this at our last County Council meeting. As you are quite aware, we are getting quite a winter and the winter sports are, everybody is enjoying, enjoying the snow along with, other than the snowmobilers, it's been a great winter for the trails. And so what I'm seeking here is, I don't know if I need to read it, Mr. Deputy Warden, but it is pretty straightforward. Is looking for maybe a possible solution. I will say, it has been a busy area, as I understand. And as of note, I know a few weeks back or thereabouts, there was a ride for cancer, snowmobile ride for cancer. And I know that was a challenging situation is itself was with regards to this is a staging area. I think they did manage and were able to figure something out to use the space. But it is a very proper spot. I will say that not only just snowmobilers are are using it right now for a staging area, but others that enjoy the trail, they park there, they walk the trail, snowshoes, ski, whatever they wish to do on that trail as well. So it's not just the snowmobile clubs or the enthusiasts that enjoy the snowmobile trail itself. But I also want to, one last comment is, this is a staging area that does sort of, it's the center of Gray County, and it does provide access to different parts of Gray County. One is Own Sound. I know there are a lot of snowmobilers that do go into Own Sound. And I know a few years back, Own Sound opened up an area or allowed them to come in to to get gas and, you know, and provide, I guess, revenue for businesses and how, you know, food and all that kind of stuff there and along through down to our southern part is you, Mr. Ward and South Gate and beyond. So, you know, the snow has been, you know, the trail system, I think, has never been as good as it has been this winter for a lot of years. And and I know that there are a lot of enthusiasts out there that do run not just older snowmobiles, but high-priced and costly machines that, you know, they only have a short season and they should try to make up for it. So again, it's pretty straightforward. Just looking for a solution that we have always had in the past cleared this spot as a staging area. And I'll leave it at that if there's any questions, Mr. Deputy Ward.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Counselor Greg. You're muted, sir. Darn it. There you go.
That's unfortunate after I did so well in the singing the National Anthem. A question for staff. A year ago, we, we did have a budget allotment, I think from memory of thirty thousand or forty thousand dollars. And it was reduced to support snow clearing at two properties, Colapore and Markdale. The motion wasn't clear and direct and specific to one of those properties. So I just wondered if staff could speak to what alternatives are here? If we're not involved in the, the business of cleaning, clearing that snow, can we not provide permission through our planning department? So Gray Highlands can go in there and actively pursue that. And also, I guess, an additional question is, I don't think the taxpayers of Gray County should be footing the bill to support parking for individuals that might be traveling to the community. Yes, I understand the the supports that we receive economically through the snowmobilers activities in Gray County. But you can make that argument for a wealth of different activities. And I'm just going to use a B, you know, I can stay at a B and B in Markdale and go cross-country skiing or wonderful Walters Falls and, and go skiing and support the economy in the same way. So I do believe if there's a report coming back, can staff pursue what a paid parking model would look like? And I think of the Brew Ski Club at Hepworth. Those members pay for snow removal for them to park at that Gray Sawal Conservation Authority property. So if there's a report comes back, I'd like to see staff be able to comment on the feasibility of incorporating paid parking at that location. So the cost is not borne by the general taxpayer.
Thank you, sir. And just to be clear, the motion as proposed, and I, I don't want to get into a drawn-out debate on the merits of the trail system and the snowmobilers and anyone else that, you know, visitors that come, because we can all agree that that's all good. The motion is asking for a report to come back to council on the feasibility or options of clearing that parking lot. So let's, let's try to stay on that piece, at least unless somebody amends the motion, of course, but that's where we're at right now. Scott, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Great. Thanks through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Maybe I'll take a moment to respond to Counselor Greg's questions and, and also some of Counselor McQueen's points who raised this matter. So Counselor Greg is correct. Two years ago at budget time, on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, we did have a good discussion on the, the trails budget at that time, as, as council will recall, it was a very tight budget year and staff and council worked together to look for options that, that could result in some savings. At that time, the county had been clearing two parking lots that are used for our forest and trails throughout the winter. And so that was the Colapore lot over on Gray Road Two, and that was this lot on, in Markdale off of twelve or Main Street in Markdale. Counselor Greg is correct. We had around thirty thousand proposed in the budget going into that December fifteenth meeting. But based on the direction from council and a healthy discussion at council at that time, we did reduce it to twenty thousand dollars. And there were some comments made from, from council about, about options for the Markdale lot, whether or not there was, there was any other means to, to get that lot cleared. And, and since then, we have further investigated those options. We've talked to Pat's team in Transportation Services, and they've noted that they don't have the ability to clear it on a regular basis, based on their equipment and pressures elsewhere. We've had a similar discussion just recently with staff in Gray Highlands. And, and they gave a very similar answer in terms of they don't have the capacity. We also reached out to the snowmobile club and said, you know, do you have either capacity or do you have monies that you could help put towards this in terms of that clearing? They also noted that, that they didn't have, have anything they could, could offer in that regard. And I don't say that in any way as a strike against the snowmobile club. They've been a wonderful partner over the years, and we look to continue that, that partnership. So going into twenty twenty, well, winter, late winter of twenty twenty-four and into twenty twenty-five, staff made the decision based on the amount that was in the budget and based on that discussion from council in twenty twenty-three to continue to plow the park, the parking lot at Colapore, but to, to discontinue plowing in, in Markdale. And, and based on the direction from council, we could have done that already in twenty twenty-four, but at that point, when it was December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, we already had a contractor lined up. So we continued on with the contract for, for last winter. But then into this winter, we've, we've, we've discontinued that. If there's an appetite from council for, for a report back, certainly staff would be happy to write the report. The one thing I would note is although it's, it's plenty snowy out there today, I'm anticipating we're going to run out of winter here within the next month or two, hopefully. And, and so if there's a desire to, to start seeing this, this lot plowed earlier, and, and if it was council's direction, staff have reached out to a contractor to see if clearing is possible this year and, and they have indicated that it would be. We've worked with our purchasing team. And, and so if it was council's direction, we could start plowing immediately with, with the money to come from any savings realized in, in the forestry and trails budget. And, and if there wasn't the savings available in that regard, we would draw the money from, from the trails reserve. So that's hopefully a high-level overview and certainly happy to take any more questions if there are any.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott, for that. Any further discussion? Counselor Mackey, please.
Thanks. Good morning, Deputy Warden and County Council. I guess my question through you, Deputy Warden to Scott, is how many parking areas do we have along the rail trail system? I know in in Chatsworth, we keep the old arena parking lot free and clear of snow for snowmobilers to, to go there. That's done by the lower-tier municipality, and I think that's working fine. But I guess I'm wondering how long, how, how many other spots, you know, are there places in Dundalk? Are there places in Own Sound for the tourism industry for these snowmobilers to park? I'm not sure. Every community needs to have a, a paid or unpaid parking area, but I think in my mind, there's maybe enough right now without adding anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Scott, do you have a response to that, please?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. It's a good question, Counselor Mackey. In terms of parking lots that the county owns, this would be the only formal one other than, you know, some people choose to, to launch their snow machines from, from the county admin building in Own Sound here. But as you point out, there are a number of other lots throughout the seventy-seven kilometer-long trail, including, as you noted, the, the parking lot in, in Chatsworth. We've recently worked with the township of, of Southgate as part of the future construction of their medical clinic to allow for some, some parking in Dundalk for, for that launching off point. And, and there are certainly locations in, in Own Sound and in other areas where, where people would launch their machines from. I would note, we do have a parking lot, a county-owned parking lot in, in Rockford that was constructed a year or two ago. In this case, again, because of the budget pressures, we haven't been, been clearing that lot. But in, in future years, we could have that discussion if there was an appetite in, in in the future for, for a staff report on, on the option for paid parking throughout some of our county facilities. We could look into that further as staff as well.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor Boddy, please.
Thank you, Deputy Warren, Warden. Looking at the motion, I'm not opposed to the report, except that it's just on the option of removing snow from that parking lot. So what I'd like to do is move an amendment to the motion that would add at the end. So instead of a period at the end of trail would add and other alternative parking options so that we can look at other options as well when we get that report. If there's another parking lot, there may not be. It might be, you know, left field, but if there's other options that we could use to park to get close to the trail, I'd like to know what they are.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there a secondary for that amendment? Counselor DeBreen, you seconding? Okay, thank you. Discussion on the amendment. Not seeing any, I'll call the vote. Is anyone opposed to the amendment as proposed? Counselor Greg? Counselor Mackey? Okay. That is carried. So now we're back to the motion as amended. Any further discussion? Counselor McQueen.
As you indicated, Mr. Warden, I don't want to get into a lot of details because we're looking for a report to come back. But I will say that I, maybe the numbers need to be brushed off this year, but at one time, they used to say the snowmobiling industry would, for the interior economy, was over three billion dollars and, and probably in a good winter versus other winters. But we have spent a lot of money on this trail system over the years. I think there was, was it, maybe I looked at Mr. Mackey, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in a particular crossing just outside of Chatsworth. And you know, I, I, you know, as one might say, you cut your nose in spite of your face, but you know, we have this trail system for four seasons. And I think that with regards to, I think, Gray County in the sense of tourism and economic development, this would be a small, a small piece to consider for what the dollar values that come into Gray County. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on amended motion? Not seeing any, I'll call the vote. Anyone opposed to this? So now we're voting to get a report back. Is anyone opposed to getting a report back? Okay, that is carried. So a report will come back when it's, when it's prepared. There's no delegations this morning. Consent agenda is there? Is there any item that needs to be removed for further discussion? Counselor Greg?
Six H, please.
Six H is in Harry. Okay. Any others? Not seeing any. Would someone care to move or receive the consented agenda saving except for six H? Counselor Boarder, no, thank you. Counselor McKay will second. Anyone opposed? Sorry. Oh, okay. Anyone opposed? That is carried. Items for direction and discussion. The first this morning is the closed-meeting investigation report from Eardan Burles. Madam Clerk, you're going to introduce the speaker of this report, please.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. And just for County Council's information, we did receive a closed-meeting investigation from the joint meeting held August eighth, twenty twenty-four. Megan Barrett from Eardan Burles is in attendance today to provide you with an overview of the report and answer any questions you have. So welcome, Megan.
Welcome, Megan. Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And, and good morning, Council, through you, Deputy Warden. My name's Megan Barrett. I'm a lawyer and a partner at Eardan Burles and was the lead investigator and the author of the closed-meeting report that's attached to your agenda this morning. So I want to start with a discussion of the request that our office received. And it was a formal request for a closed-meeting investigation regarding the closed session of the special county of Gray joint all councils meeting that occurred on August eighth of last year. The request alleged that the meeting contravened section two thirty-nine of the municipal act as council. And, and when I say council in this presentation, I mean the joint all council, which is comprised of all members of council of each of the member municipalities. So at that meeting, the allegation is that council discussed matters in closed session that went beyond the two stated exceptions relied on in the, in the resolution for holding the closed meeting, and that was labor relations or employee negotiations under clause two thirty-nine, sub-two D, and solicitor-client privilege under clause two thirty-nine, two F. And of course, these exceptions are to the open meeting rule in section two thirty-nine of the municipal act that requires all meetings to be open to the public except in specific enumerated circumstances or exceptions, which are set out in the act. Those are two of those exceptions. As detailed in the report, we concluded following our investigation that the allegations in the request could not be sustained. And that council was entitled to rely on the cited exceptions for the closed meeting. There was an additional and unusual allegation in the request regarding an alleged failure to comply with the process set out in the great county of Gray collaborative decision-making framework. So as noted in paragraph eleven of our report, whether council complied with the process set in the collaborative framework is outside of the scope of our jurisdiction to investigate. And so we did not. But furthermore, the collaborative framework appears to be a policy guidance document and is clearly separate and apart from the county's procedural bylaw. And that procedural bylaw is part of our jurisdiction, but the collaborative framework is not part of, of that bylaw. With respect to our investigation, we reviewed the background materials that are listed at paragraph twelve of the report. And we also conducted telephone interviews with two members of senior staff who were in, in attendance at that meeting. And we were satisfied on the basis of these interviews that we had sufficient information to conclude our investigation. The details of the meeting and the resolution to convene in closed session are set out in detail on pages three and four of the report. I won't go through those in detail. As part of our report, we reviewed and considered the procedure that was followed at the meeting. And that set out on page, starting on page four of the report. We concluded based on our review that the procedure that was followed that day and, and it's the standard procedure, as I understand it, met all procedural requirements and best practices for a meeting. With respect to the applicability of the exception for labor relations and employee negotiations, our analysis is set out at page five of the report. As noted, the purpose of this exception is to protect discussions regarding the relationship between a municipality and its employees. Based on our investigation, we concluded that, that the main topic and focus of the meeting fell within the scope of this exception under the act. Specifically, the presentation to council and the subsequent discussion focused on the staffing impacts of a shared planning service model. And while some background information about shared planning services was presented as context for council's consideration of whether to direct senior staff to take the next step and advise planning staff that council was considering restructuring the delivery of planning services. The ombudsman has previously held, and we agree, that this level of information and, and discussion in this context is permitted in a closed session. And that's set out in more detail in the report. With respect to our analysis on the exception for solicitor-client privilege, our analysis starts at page six of the report. The purpose of this exception is to ensure that council can speak frankly about legal advice without the fear of disclosure. In this case, there was no lawyer present at the meeting, which there does not need to be in order to take advantage of this exception. However, confidential legal advice from the county solicitor was presented to council by the county's Director of Human Resources. And, and met the test under the act. The final substantive section of the report addresses the allegation in the request that the primary topic of discussion at the meeting was shared planning services. And while the, the matter of shared planning services will affect employees, the, the request alleges, other considerations such as the impact on the public, municipal finances and effective planning weighed in favor of holding at least part of the discussion in open session. So we consider this submission from, from the requister. And this is addressed at paragraphs forty-three and forty-four of our report. We understand that there were some questions from members of council at the meeting regarding implementation of the shared services model during the closed session. But based on our investigation and specifically our interviews with the members of staff that were present at the, at the meeting, we understand that council were advised that these matters would be dealt with in greater detail as part of a subsequent public process, and we're aware that that did in fact occur. Based on our investigation and consideration of applicable case law, we concluded that the focus of the meeting was directly related to the subject matter for which council resolved to convene in closed session. And additionally, and finally, we found that even if there were some parts of the discussion that could possibly have been held in open session, those portions of the meeting were inextricably linked. And that's very important. We're considering the case law to the in-camera discussion, which were, for discussions which were properly held in a closed session. So based on our conclusions that the council, that council did not contravene the, the municipal act and did not hold an improper meeting, we did not make any substantive recommendations. But we did provide this report in accordance with our statutory obligations and for your, for your information. Thank you very much. I, I am happy to answer any questions if there are any arising.
Thank you, Megan, for that very encompassing report. It was well, 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 well done. I do need a mover and seconder before we go into any discussion. Move by Counselor DeBreen, second by Counselor Boarder. No, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Megan? Counselor Greg, please.
Thank you for the opportunity. And through you, thanks for the presentation, Megan. This is actually probably a question just back to staff, but would staff be able to comment any approximate cost to the corporation for such an investigation to be held?
Tara, do you have any thoughts on that or?
I don't, we're, we're not sure what the, the cost of this particular investigation has been. I can speak from past experience. They can, there can be a range in, in costs. And the last one we had, I believe, was just over a thousand dollars.
Thank you, Tara. I, I was, I was going to guess between a dollar three eighty and a bazillion dollars, but plus HST, but anyone else have any questions for Megan? Okay, not seeing any. I'll ask if anyone is opposed to receiving this report. Seeing none, I will declare that carried. Thank you very much, Megan. Appreciate your time and your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item is Forest Management Bylaw Update. Someone care to move and second that, please? Counselor Hutchison and Counselor Kivony, thank you very much. Sarah online or who's going to be taking this? Oh, Scott. Okay, Scott, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden, and I apologize. It was supposed to be Sarah Johnson here today. She is under the weather and doesn't have a voice. So you're, you're stuck with me again. So luckily I have a voice, I think.
I think you have a pretty good one. Yes.
I'm just going to share my screen here. Could, could you just confirm, Mr. Deputy Warden, that you can see what's on the screen there?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for, for your time here this morning, Council. We'll just get right into it. So as you're likely aware, our Gray County has had a Forest Management Bylaw in place for over twenty years now. That bylaw is getting a little long in the tooth, and, and there have been some, some legislative changes that have happened since its passing in the early two thousands, as well as staff having worked with the bylaw now for twenty years have, have noticed some deficiencies in the bylaw that, that we would like to seek some direction on potentially correcting. Some of you that have been around a little while may recall that we did actually launch this process in early twenty twenty, and there was a staff report to, to committee the whole at that time. And the thought was we would go out and, and do some consultation on a new bylaw, prepare a draft for council's consideration, then, then look to update the bylaw. We had prepared our first consultation session for mid-March of twenty twenty. And I think we all know what happened sort of in early March of twenty twenty. And long story short, that project got shelved based on, on some other necessities that we were dealing with at the time related to the pandemic. We are excited to hopefully relaunch the process here now. And I just want to give you a little background on the Forest Management Bylaw itself, as well as the, the proposed changes through the new bylaw for, for council's consideration. So a Forest Management Bylaw regulates forests. And when I say, or regulates woodlands, sorry, when I say woodlands, I mean those wooded areas, a hectare or, or greater in size. And so that hectare doesn't have to be all on a single property. It can be a hectare spanning multiple properties, or it can be multiple hectares on a single property. This is different than some of your own municipal tree bylaws, so that the county deals with, with the woodland, so to speak, the, the bigger groupings of trees. And, and a number of our municipalities have individual tree bylaws. Some only deal with bylaw, with trees on public lands versus some get into, to private trees as well. So that could get down into smaller clusters of trees, less than a hectare, or in some cases, even individual trees in that regard. And one of the goals of this review would be to ensure that the county's bylaw and any municipal bylaws are working in tandem together. We don't ever want to get into a situation where somebody's needing to apply for a permit under multiple bylaws. You know, if the municipality is already sufficiently regulating something, then certainly the county doesn't need to wade into that and vice versa. If the county's bylaw already covers our, our woodlands, then, then the municipal bylaws don't need to, to touch on some of those matters as well. So with respect to what's being proposed here, what we're seeking today is, is direction from council to proceed with consultation on a new bylaw. And, and linked to the report, there is a draft of the new bylaw. But we're not asking for council's blessing to pass the bylaw today, simply to go out and start those conversations. With respect to some of the changes in the new bylaw, under the current bylaw, there's basically two main types of harvesting applications. The one that council might be most familiar with is our minor exemption applications. Minor exemptions is, are when we're looking at clearcutting a section of woodland. Those get circulated to neighbors and agencies and municipalities, and then those decisions come back before county committee the whole for, for their approval in that regard. The other type of forestry permits which council might be less, less familiar with are those selective harvesting permits. And the selective harvesting permits are when somebody has a woodland and wants to just go and, and thin the bush. And, and there's two types of selective harvesting permits under the current bylaw. One is when, when those permits are being done in a One is when when those permits are being done in accordance with good forestry practices. And so that's thinning, thinning the forest a little bit, but still leaving plenty of of mature growth to to continue on and and the succession to come up behind there. And the other is a circumference limit harvest. And this circumference limit harvest is again thinning the bush, but rather than being based on good forestry practices, the the forester would go in and and remove the biggest sort of most profitable trees, if you will. And while that makes sense from a dollars and cents perspective, it's not always the best for 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 the woodland or the forest as a whole. So under this new bylaw, one of the changes in in the bylaw is to remove the circumference limit harvesting such that any any selective harvesting would be done in accordance with good forestry practices. And I should have said under the current bylaw and under the new bylaw, those selective permits are staff delegated. And in this case, it's it's our forest enforcement officer that's issuing those permits. It's not a public process in terms of being circulated to neighbors or anyone else. And and it's it's being done based on the principles in the bylaw and and of good forestry for those selective harvests. With respect to the minor exemptions, under the new bylaw, we're proposing to rename that to to special permits. Minor exemption was creating some confusion with respect to some planning terminology around minor variances and other such things. And so special permits is maybe more appropriate here. We are looking to to change the process for minor exemptions a little bit to mimic some of our county planning processes in that regard, such that when somebody comes in with an application, in this case for a special permit formerly minor exemption, they would need to submit a complete application. So that would show exactly what they're proposing to clear. And if necessary, it might also include the requirement for an environmental impact study. Once we have that complete application, staff would begin to process the application. It would get circulated again to municipalities, conservation authorities, neighbors. We are looking to extend the circulation timeframe just slightly. The current bylaw speaks to fifteen calendar days. The new bylaw would speak to fifteen business days. Those calendar but calendar days just get a little tricky. Say if someone submits a a minor exemption application on December twenty-third, and you've got some holidays and everything else in there, maybe some weekends. So we're just looking to extend that slightly. One of the other changes we're looking at through this process is the ability to add conditions to to these minor exemption applications or now special permit applications. Some of those conditions could include things like replanting certain areas of the property, or if they were cutting in one area and replanting in another. Or they could include timeframes for when the harvest can be done to avoid breed bird breeding seasons and various other things in that regard. Again, these would be similar to some of the the powers we already have under the Planning Act and and conditions that we would attach to planning approvals. And finally, one of the other things the the draft bylaws looking at is is allowing county council the ability to delegate those special permits or formerly minor exemptions to staff. And and so the the bylaw isn't saying they are delegated, but council would have the authority should should this council or future council choose to to delegate those decisions. In some cases, maybe they're still worthy to come before before a council. In other cases, maybe they're more procedural in nature and something staff could handle within certain guidelines as set by council through the bylaw. Some of the other changes being proposed are some updates to to stop work orders, the ability to to require somebody who has been caught in an infraction to the bylaw to rehabilitate or replant the property. Quite frankly, when when we impose penalties under the current bylaw, if those penalties are able to stick, they are financial penalties. And and quite often, they don't do a whole lot in terms of preserving the overall wooded cover or replanting some of those those trees that were were taken out erroneously in that regard. So under the the new bylaw, our first preference, if if feasible, would be that we we work with the landowner to to rehabilitate or replant the trees. And only in in extreme cases would we get to situations where we need to seek financial penalties. Those penalties are being proposed to increase. Previously, for a first conviction, the penalty was ten thousand dollars or one thousand dollars per tree, and subsequent convictions were two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or two point or two, two and a half thousand dollars per tree. As you can see on the screen there, we are looking to increase those significantly. We did run into some situations under the old bylaw where where people were just viewing these penalties as as the cost of doing business and and not even seeking permits or or trying to comply with the bylaw. So in order to to speak to some of the priorities that council set through the climate change action plan and and other elements of of the various plans, including our official plan, we are looking to to make the penalties more severe for those infractions in that regard. And so with respects with respect to next steps on this process, should council provide direction today to move forward, we would look at some robust consultation in this regard. Certainly consultation with your own municipal staff would be key. But we've also identified indigenous communities, farmers, the forestry and logging industries, the development industry, conservation authorities, the NIGRSC government commission, and and the broader general public as as key partners to to consult with in this regard. Following that consultation, we'd look to prepare a finalized version of the bylaw for council's consideration. So as part of this staff report, we are seeking that the report be be received, that we be given direction to move forward with consultation, and that following those that consultation, we'd report back to county council with with a finalized version of the bylaw. I apologize. I probably haven't done it justice in the same way that Sarah could, but hopefully I've given you a taste of it and certainly can try to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I'm sure Sarah would be pleased with how you handled that. Are there any questions? Councillor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. I was just sort of looking through the exemptions of the bylaw here, and I guess a couple of things that maybe I'd like to maybe to have addressed, and I see there's the normal farm practices. So where I'm saying, a couple of things for personal use of of firewood or firewood for sale to add to sale of of farm revenue. So maybe I'll start. I'll start there. I have the number ones.
Scott?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Thank you for your your comments and questions, Councillor McQueen. Some of the exemptions that are that are in the current bylaw and carried forward to the the new bylaw, my understanding are are legislated in in that we have to provide them. And so there are certain exemptions that work in conjunction with other pieces of legislation, like the Planning Act or or the Agri Resources Act. And and there's other pieces of of or there's other exemptions that we have a little bit more leeway on. Specifically with respect to to farming and and farm usage, under the current bylaw, if if a farmer wants to clear cut an area for the purposes of of making a new field or or expanding their operation in that regard, it would require a minor exemption application. Under the new bylaw, there would there would be similar provisions for for that special permit. If if the farmer is looking to maintain a fence line or or, you know, if you go up in the spring and there's new seedlings that have popped up, certainly you don't. You don't need a permit for that. We did have a an instance a number of years ago where there was a farmer that had cleared some land and and the county sought to set charges in that regard because a permit wasn't issued. And 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 the matter got referred to the normal farm practices board. In that case, the normal farm practices board, and and that was one specific case found in the county's favor to say that, you know, the county allows for farming to continue. We allow for maintenance of those hedgerows and everything else. But the the board found that it wasn't unreasonable for the county to to require a permit when there was when there was clear cutting being proposed. With respect to some of the other points you brought up, both the new bylaw and the 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 new proposed bylaw and the existing bylaw already allow for cutting for your own personal use. So if you want to go back to the bush and cut for firewood, yep, that's that's totally okay. You know, you can't clear cut a bush and and say that you cut it all for firewood, but but there's exemptions built in there. There's exemptions in both bylaws where somebody has a building permit. So if we go back to the farmer example, if somebody applied for a building permit for a new barn or drive shed or silo or what have you, then you don't need a forest management bylaw permit for that. That's covered by your building permit. So staff believe that that the new bylaw strikes a balance between preserving farmer's ability to continue about their their operations with with minimal headaches and hassles from the county, but also protecting our our wooden cover, which we know is is so important to our landscape and our community in that regard. We did have an initial discussion with this one with the agricultural advisory committee. And certainly if council provides direction here today, we look forward to reaching back out to that committee and other farmers to understand whether we're whether we've hit the right tone here or whether in fact we do need further changes. Sorry, that was a bit of a long-winded answer, but happy to to take any further questions.
No, that's that's good, Scott. And again, as I said to an earlier report, we're not looking to litigate the bylaw here this morning. We're just looking for direction to consult with the community and on advisory groups on a new bylaw. But nonetheless, councillor McQueen?
It just took. Yeah, I just wanted to seek some clarity, and I understand that Deputy Warden, we're going through a process. But I guess where I want to expand, certainly from from personal use, but you may go into a a forest area and cut selective timbers out to add or replace your sills in your barn or your, you know, your old bank barn. You may, you know, look for selective. I I guess a part that comes back is you go in and cut a half a dozen trees that are selective for that purpose, or maybe a dozen you're replacing the barn thrash floor in your barn. All of a sudden, there's a five thousand dollar per tree fine. I think there's something that just sort of warrant a little bit of a conversation around that. Or you're you're cutting fence posts or or whatever for that purpose. The other thing that that want to go back on is fence rows. Like, this mentioned about two hectares or more. Are we talking fence rows now that are are being protected? Are farmers are allowed to take fence rows out? What are you saying there, Scott, in that sense, with regards to fence rows?
Scott, please?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Warden. Through you, with respect to to the the own use to to councillor McQueen, farmers would still be allowed to go cut for for cedar fence posts or or to, you know, rehabilitate a barn or or any of that sort of thing. So that's not the type of thing that the county ever, in my knowledge anyway, has ever pursued charges over. Those are own personal use and and, you know, quite frankly, we're not. We're not looking to stick our nose in there. You know, if if, you know, we got a call and and somebody had cleared fifty acres, then that probably goes a little beyond own personal use. And and that's where we'd be getting more involved. I apologize. I forgot the second part of your question already. I'm sorry if you could repeat it.
You just mentioned fence hedgerows or fence rows. I thought you mentioned here that this is this bylaw is is pertaining to a hectare or more of greater forest area. A fence row is a row of trees that maybe is decided to be removed to make a field bigger. This is not. This isn't pertaining to fence rows.
Yeah, thank you for for that clarification. Yeah. So the the current bylaw one doesn't need a permit to clear hedge rows or fence rows. This is something I think under the new bylaw, we're going to be very interested to hear from the agricultural community on. And even a couple of years ago, in in one of the discussions at the agricultural advisory committee at the county, I think there were some that were saying, yep, stay out of farmer's way. They need the ability to do that. And and there was others on the committee that were saying, no, actually, those provide valuable resources, not necessarily just from a live or from a habitat perspective, but also from an erosion and and windbreak perspective in that regard. So the new bylaw, as it's written right now, my understanding would still allow for the clearing of those fence lines and hedgerows in that regard. But I think that's something we're going to want to hear more from from the farm community on. As I said, the the bylaw speaks to a hectare or greater, and certainly, you know, maybe if you had a a lot of hedgerows, you could you could maybe string together a a long, long linear hectare. But that wasn't the the intent of of the current bylaw or the draft bylaw. But that might be a topic we get some divisive opinions on.
Thank you, Scott. Good, Paul?
Yep. Okay. I'll leave my comments to a further time.
All right. Thank you very much. Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Deputy Warden. And through you to Scott, good forestry practices, Scott. Who establishes those? Is that a provincial authority? Because, you know, we will have a forestry with the the county. There are private foresters. So is it a standardized good forestry practice?
Scott?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Councillor Mackey. So I'm just keep looking at my other screen to to refer to some references here. So good forestry practices is defined in the the bylaw itself. And 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 that stems back to my understanding is a definition in the Forestry Act. The other thing to note is that both public and private foresters can be certified certified as a registered professional forester. So certainly some of the conservation authorities have those on staff, and and the folks that we contract out at Gray Sobel have their registered professional forestry designation. So similar to to how I operate as 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 a planner, there's there's certain definitions and and codes of ethics within there that constitute what a responsible forestry is and and good forestry practices. So that's about the extent of my knowledge. I could certainly look into it further and and dig up that definition from the act. But it is a a defined term, and my understanding is there is some some meat on the bone there such that it's it's not sort of purely subjective in that you could have somebody saying this is good forestry and and somebody else saying, no, that's actually good forestry kind of thing.
Thank you, Scott. And if I might, Mr. Warden, one follow-up question, and I guess it kind of is a continuation of councillor McQueen's. But over the last number of years with the increased value in in cropland, we've seen marginal farmland that might fall under the definition of our woodlands, you know, that are covered with hawthorn trees or, you know, small apple trees that are are being brought back for agricultural land. Would the agricultural community be prohibited from doing that with this bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. I I I think it would depend. There's there's case by case scenarios. First and foremost, we would need to understand whether or not what was proposed for clearing met the definition of a woodlot of a woodland, sorry. And there is a definition both in the current and proposed bylaw on on what constitutes a woodland. And it has to do with the the number of trees per hectare. And if you're getting into lower numbers of trees, the the diameter at breast height of those trees per hectare. So there's there's four four classes of what could constitute a woodland. One of the things we're looking to do through the new bylaw is to put in more verbiage around those instances where we might have dead or dying trees or invasives in that regard. So certainly, when when the Emerald Ash Bore started to sweep through the county, we were seeing significant damages to some woodlots that that had heavy ash content in that regard. And certainly even in our own county forests, as as county council will be well aware, we've seen greater and greater amounts of invasive species like the buckthorn. So, you know, I think the balance we're trying to strike here is is certainly not to stand in anyone's way in terms of removing those invasive species. But we also want to make sure that 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 that's not abused and and that you're not clearing a whole woodland that maybe is ten percent ash on on the basis that that you've got the the Emerald Ash Bore in there. So certainly something we can dig into further and and understand better. But if council has any any thoughts or direction as we go through this process, certainly staff are happy to take it or to to research further in that regard.
Just to note, county council, the deputy warden is experiencing technical difficulties. So password and queen, if I could ask you to continue sharing in his absence momentarily, that would be appreciated on the fly.
Sorry about that. Adam Clerk in council?
No problem.
Cranky mood today.
Scott Taylor had. Scott Taylor just answered a question from council, and councillor Echols has a question.
Very good. Councillor Echols, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, through you is a question towards Scott. A number of years ago, the county and I'm not sure just what the the term is, but got all of their forests not licensed, but it was an application put forward on on the forest on the county force and you know, best practices and everything and and got a certification at that time. The bylaw, how does it mesh in with that and with other individuals that have force and and holding? I guess. Sorry, Mr. Chair, probably getting down down into trying to put stuff in and out of this bylaw. And all we're trying to do is giving direction for staff to go forward. But for that certification, does the county still have certified certified certification on the force?
Scott?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, thank you for raising those comments, councillor Echols. So so a number of the the councillors that have been around for for a little bit longer will recall that the the county went through a process back when the 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 county forests were under the clerks department to 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 become FSC certified. And I might get the acronym wrong, but I believe it's Forest Stewardship Council Certification. Basically, that's a voluntary certification that we submitted to demonstrate to the public and those that might be looking to purchase from our county forest, that we are using good forestry practices and sustainable practices to manage our forests. So the county did that. Some of our conservation authorities have done that. Some have since backed out of that FSC certification. And our understanding is that certification might be changing here in the near future. And we might actually be coming back to council with a new certification that the county might consider. But as of today, we are still FSC certified. With respect to the bylaw itself, I don't know that it explicitly speaks to those type of certifications, but certainly the types of selective harvesting that we're talking about under those good forestry principles. Those would be some of those same principles that the FSC group is looking at in certifying force in that regard. So, you know, it's something we could look into if there's a thought that there needs to be some verbiage in the bylaw about those types of certifications. But the one, I guess, caution from staff is, you know, those things can change over time and evolve. And so, you know, by putting in the good forestry practices, then, you know, it might cover all bases in terms of those individual certifications that a landowner may or may not have in that regard.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, I see there's two more hands there and I'm gonna remind council again, we're not litigating the bylaw today. This is only a request to go forward in consultation. So with that said, Councilor Warden, y'all, please.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Through you, good morning, County Council. Scott, it's the question, you know, I know there's two parts, selective harvesting and clear cutting. And, you know, the county and the local, the lower tiers should not overlap. Is there any tie on clear cutting to development with the changes to this bylaw? That'd just be my only question, Mr. Deputy Warden to Scott.
Scott?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Thank you for your question, Councilor Warden. So there's a few things with respect to development in the current bylaw, but there's actually a new change in the proposed bylaw that I probably should have highlighted. So when somebody already has a development approval under the Planning Act, let's say a plan of subdivision or a site plan, they don't need a permit under our forest management bylaw. So the thought is they've been put through the paces in terms of submitting their environmental studies and going through public processes under the Planning Act. And therefore they don't need anything further under the forest management bylaw as long as they're abiding with any of the approvals they got under the Planning Act. What we've been facing more in recent years is developers coming forward to us and saying, hey, listen, I'd like to submit a Planning Act application. I'm looking at this big new plan of subdivision on 50 acres. And in order to do some of the due diligence on the property, including drilling boreholes for geotechnical studies and various other things, I do need to clear some trees in advance of submitting my application. And so the current bylaw doesn't really speak to that in any substantive way. It's sort of a binary system. Either you have your Planning Act approvals and therefore you're exempt, or you don't have your Planning Act approvals and therefore you're looking for a permit under the forest management bylaw. So one of the things that we're proposing through this new bylaw is to put in a system whereby a developer could be exempted for some selective clearing, assuming they've done some environmental work and demonstrated to us that they're not, you know, clearing endangered species or destroying endangered species habitat in that regard, to, you know, open the door to them submitting those Planning Act applications. But those environmental tests would still be sort of enforced, if you like, or tested through the Planning Act process. So the new bylaw certainly wouldn't open the door to a developer saying, hey, I want to clear my whole property, therefore I don't need to do my environmental study when I submit my applications. But potentially if a draft similar to what's before you today were to go forward, it would allow for some selective cutting for the purposes of doing those technical studies that we need to have a consti- to constitute a complete application for our Planning Act application.
Thank you, Scott. You good, Peter? Counselor DeBreen? You are muted, ma'am. There you go.
My apologies. I had two computers going and I unclicked the other one. Thank you, Deputy Warden. And through you to Scott, a little bit ago I had inquired to Lee Thurston at Gray Sawbowl about the forest management best practices and was surprised to learn that the province has abandoned its forests and are no longer being managed. So I guess my question to through you, to you is, I doubt very much the province is going to enter in upon this consultation. So how do we address those forests, the best forest management as it could affect our county forests? And I'm not expecting an answer today, but through this process, which I'm supportive of, does good forest management include fire breaks and controlled underbrush burns to ensure that we are protecting the forests that we have from and protecting our fire service if they are called out to fight a fire? We all know what's happening elsewhere and we certainly don't want that to happen here. So just things for consideration because I don't know that certain individuals are going to enter in upon the consultation. Thank you.
Scott, any response there? Are you good?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor DeBreen. Certainly we can look into some of those matters further. With respect to the fire piece, it's something that we're seeing more and more information on coming from the province. And we do actually have a layer in our official plan, which is trying to map those high risk areas. And again, I'm no expert here, but what I've been told in the past is many of the forest types that we have in Gray are not those most prone to fires in that regard. But certainly as our climate changes, we want to be wary of that. With respect to the province and their role in forestry, we know that over the years, the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry has had some cuts and some changes. Certainly we'd love to tap into some of their expertise if they're willing to engage on this consultation. But primarily this bylaw would regulate privately owned forests. So there are exemptions in there for municipal projects or for certain infrastructure projects. And so it wouldn't necessarily affect provincially owned forests in that regard. But if we could tap into their expertise, then we'd love to have any of those staff at the table.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor DeBreen?
So to that, would the ministry be circulated on or invited to the table? I guess is the important question. How do we tap into their expertise?
Scott?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. We can certainly invite and we can certainly send emails and make phone calls as to whether or not they have the current capacity to provide us input. I'm not sure. But certainly we've been working with different ministry staff as part of our outdoor management group. And to the extent they can, they've been wonderful to deal with and, you know, their hearts are in the right place. And like everybody, they're stretched with resources, but we'll certainly make that effort to engage in that regard and see what we come up with.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor Greg?
Thank you, Deputy Warden, for the opportunity. I totally understand what your comments about we're not being the actual bylaw here today. However, I do find sometimes we get to a place where we're almost at a critical path point. And I just want to make sure that we don't miss any items that should be discussed here today. I'm certainly leaning on my colleagues that present a bit more of a rural lens. I do have a question for Scott. It still hasn't been well defined to me on what has informed to where we're at now, particularly item one, removal of circumference limit cutting and only allowing for managed cutting in accordance with good forestry practices. Has this been, have we got here because we've already consulted with private enterprises? Or are we informing this draft bylaw only on the shoulders of essentially public personnel and conservation authority? Because there may be different perspectives that get executed here. And I'm concerned that we're at a draft bylaw stage that has not fully informed differing opinions and viewpoints. I think of, you know, if you remove a circumference cutting, and I have walked bushes, you will encounter instances where perhaps the farmer has one option, leave a big tree standing and accept the possibility of legal action if that tree finally lands in an adjoining neighbor's back of their house or shed. Or B, cut it. And we're looking at now increasing the current fine 500% to the farmer to perhaps remove what is a liability standing in the woodlot. And it's because we're increasing or we're removal, removing the circumference cutting. There's a couple components here. I'm concerned with how and who has informed where we're at here today. And why 500% of an increase from $1,000? That's pretty extreme.
Scott?
Thank you. Thank you for your questions, Counselor Greg. With respect to the consultation that's been done to date, we've primarily been working as county staff and working with our excellent legal services staff as well as some selected registered professional foresters that has, you suspected our conservation authority staff in that regard. So certainly what we've heard from the professional foresters is that circumference limit harvesting can be damaging to the long-term health of the woodlot. But we're open to all perspectives in that regard. And one of the reasons we'd be doing this consultation and particularly be in the forestry and logging industry on the shoulder there is we want to hear those perspectives. And maybe there's some middle ground or maybe there's something that we're misunderstanding or not understanding about the circumference limit harvesting. I think with respect to the scenario that you've outlined in terms of, you know, liability of a large tree or something else, you know, I don't think we're getting quite that granular in terms of those good forestry permit harvests. You know, what I understand from the good forestry practices is that you're taking a selection of diameters, but that you might also be targeting diseased or damaged trees. And those diseased or damaged trees, my understanding in most cases are quite often the largest liability in terms of, you know, destroying a fence or a building or something in that regard. So we're certainly happy to bring back any feedback to council if we hear from the industry on that circumference limit harvesting. But to date, we haven't done robust public or forestry industry consultations just yet. With respect to your, your question about the fines, the fines are meant to be a deterrent on illegal activity. And those current fines were set quite some time ago. And without getting into the specifics of any individual cases, as I said, we have had those cases where, under the current fines, it was easier just to sort of do the crime and pay the fine, so to speak. And that was the cost of doing business in terms of land clearing for future development or future other purposes in that regard. So we did want to create a disincentive there. But as I said in the presentation, our goal as staff isn't to lead with any kind of fine. Generally speaking, in the past, it's been to lead with education and that would still be your goal. And the secondary goal would be, are there instances where it makes sense to order replanting rather than seeking a monetary penalty in that regard?
Thank you, Scott. Good, Counselor Greg?
Yeah, I'll just be glad in the future reporting when it's articulated that we've consulted those other communities closely and that their input is certainly acknowledged in the forthcoming documents.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. Anyone opposed to this? It's not seeing any that is carried. It is 11:16. Do we require a break? Yep, I'm seeing some heads nodding. Let's come back at 11:00. We'll aim for 11:25. That'll give us 10 minutes. All right. See you then. That'll give us ten minutes. All right, see you then. Earning your lot today, Scott.
Planning heavy agenda, I apologize.
Oh, she don't need to apologize. It's going great, it's going great, although we are getting perilously close to to start a lunch.
Thank you for recognizing that, Mr. Chair.
Hey, it is eleven twenty-five. Madam Clerk, do we have? A quorum returned? Looks like we must be close. Guess we can wait another minute or so, if you wish.
We do have quorum.
Hey, I see a couple more have come back, so. All righty, we will reconvene, bring the meeting back to order. Thank you all. Uh the next item of business is the uh report regarding the CP rail trail crossings in Dundalk. Uh it's fairly lengthy uh resolution or motion there, so I will let to, oh, I need a mover in second. Counselor DeBreen, DeBreen will move second by. Counselor Carlton, thank you so much. Uh Scott, I think we're back to you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. I'll just share my screen here and we'll get on with things. So hopefully everyone can see the PowerPoint. Great, thank you. So as councils aware, we we, the county owns the the uh seventy-seven kilometer long uh CP rail trail. Um that is maintained currently as both a trail, a multi-user trail and an infrastructure corridor. Um but it's also preserved should should there ever be an opportunity to to um uh have rail return to the county in that regard. The 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 subject matter of this report is because of the growth of the community of of Dundalk. Uh we are seeing requests for four new uh road crossings of the trail. And and just for for the council's benefit, uh in the existing scenario where we have a road crossing the trail. It would be the road authority that owns and maintains that road, so if it was a a county road or provincial highway, it would be the county or the province that owns. And maintains the road uh and and uh the the trail would simply uh cross the road, of course. Um in doing so, the the county doesn't take on any liable, any added maintenance or liability with respect to the maintenance of those roads that cross the trail. More specifically, in terms of what's before us today, uh we have two proposed crossings in in the north end of of Dundalk. Uh which would facilitate connections between two draft approved plans of subdivision. Uh it would also facilitate the construction of a new public school site in Dundalk, which is badly, badly needed. Uh and then we have two proposed crossings in the south end of Dundalk and and these would be to facilitate the township's extension. Of their eco parkway uh from Highway ten to to the current eco parkway. Uh this would take some of the industrial track traffic out of downtown Dundalk. Uh and and off the county road in that regard, and so I've just got a few maps here to show you what I'm talking about. Uh so this is the north end of Dundalk. Um we have in in the blue and the red here, the blue is um Glenalge. Uh phase two draft plan of subdivision and the red is Glenalge phase three. And then we have the the CP rail trail which bisects those two draft plans, and so if we move on to the next slide here. Here's those two draft plans and what you can see circled in red there are those sort of two uh connecting pieces between the the two subdivisions. Uh that would cross the trail in that regard, and what you can see over here in Glenalge phase three uh is the future school site. And and so one of the reasons for the report being on the docket today um is because uh the the school board wants to move at lightning speed. To get this uh school constructed and and I I think we as a county and the township of Southgate would echo those sentiments, it can't come soon enough. Um and so these subdivisions, although they've been draft approved, haven't been registered yet and and these aren't open and publicly maintained roads yet. Uh so what we want to do is is work with the township of Southgate and they've got a similar report coming to their council, I believe, on the nineteenth and and their staff have been great to work with. Uh and we also want to work with the school board and Flato, who is the developer of these um subdivisions. Uh to allow access to to the school and construction uh vehicles uh for the purposes of of building uh that school. Uh ahead of these roads being opened as as a future uh maintained public roads that would be assumed by the township. Uh so what you might see is is a crossing at Street C here, coming over to here to Street C. Um that would be uh temporary in terms of it would be uh um only open to construction traffic or township traffic to maintain that. And not open to the public for the purposes of construction and then later on it would be built as as a a final road in that regard. And so in in working with township staff, the county thought that it makes more sense, even though these roads won't be open immediately. Uh to to transfer the lands uh to the township uh to to take kind of one party away from the table. So that the the school board and the developer aren't having to sign separate agreements with the county and the township. Uh and and hopefully lead to a more expeditious uh construction of the school site here. Uh with respect to the the proposed crossings in the uh south end of Dundalk. Um this would be, as I said, extending Eco Parkway, which you can see down here in in the the Township's Business Park. Uh across the trail and two locations out to to Highway ten. And if you like, this would provide a bit of a bypass through downtown Dundalk whereby somebody, somebody traveling through Highway ten. Uh could come on to Eco Parkway all the way through and down to Ida Street and then connect to the county road. On the sort of southwest end of Dundalk, if you will. Uh so the township is looking at those two crossings, they've been consulting us right from day one. Uh my understanding is they have completed their environmental assessment in this regard and would be looking to go to tender uh later this year for for that project. And again, to to expedite things and to hopefully uh make it easier for the township to issue those tender documents. The thought would be if we if we transfer these future road allowances now, uh then it would allow that the township to proceed on on their timelines in that regard. And this is just a schematic, you have Highway ten over here, you would have the the Eco Parkway extension coming through down here. And then these two red circles are are the two trail crossings. Um and so as you're aware, both the county's official plan and the recreational trails master plan support the long term preservation of the trail corridor. So the county is not looking to convey the entire trail through Dundalk uh to the township. We're simply looking to convey uh those road crossings where we would have new new township roads in that regard. The OP contains policies that don't support the the uh um crossing of the trail for private benefit of one or two properties. Um but county staff and working with township staff see the broader public benefits of these crossings, including the access to the future school site. Uh the access to the business park, uh the access to to the subdivisions. And and overall fostering a connected community, which is which is what we all strive for at both the county and and township levels in that regard. Uh if if direction is given to proceed proceed with these conveyances, uh certainly one of the things we'd be working closely with the township and and the developers on. Uh is is safe crossings to make sure we have the appropriate signage and gates at the crossings, the appropriate warnings on the roads. Uh to to ensure the safety of of trail users in that regard. Our legal services staff have been amazing in coaching us through this process and and highlighting what we need to understand from from a legal perspective. And one of the things that they've recommended is is that we maintain an easement uh in favor of the county for these crossings. And I and I should note, this isn't new territory for the county and it's not new territory even in Dundalk. We've had similar reports in the past in the past for for the Hagan Street Crossing uh as well as the Victoria Street Crossing, so this is this is a. Uh territory we've tried before. Uh the final bit is is there is a small section of the trail in the south end of the uh of of Dundalk. Uh where in order to facilitate that Eco Parkway expansion, there would need to be a slight lowering of the trail, so we've worked with our own transportation services staff. Um as well as Grace Alble staff who who help maintain the trails and and they have no issue with this lowering. And so that lowering would be done as part of the construction uh of the Eco Parkway expansion in that regard. So with that, staff are seeking direction that the report be received, um that we be given direction to to uh look at an agreement with the township. For those four uh road crossings. Uh as well as the the lowering of the section of the trail. Uh and if needed, that a temporary access agreement uh could be entered into uh to facilitate um. Any survey work or other such work that might be needed prior to the formal conveyance of of those crossings. That's what I have for today, but certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Excellent, thank you, Scott. Are there any questions or discussion? Counselor Eccles?
Interesting you would say that. Uh Scott. About lowering the trail. Is one of your first points was maintaining the trail. In a in a manner that should rail ever come back into play. Then, you know, we have a place to put the rail line. How is going to be lowering this trail, protecting the integrity of that option?
Scott?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden, thank you for your question, Counselor Eccles. Um this is precisely why we went out to our transportation staff and and uh Grace Alble staff who have more uh engineering expertise than I do in this regard. Our understanding is 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 the lowering of the trail would be negligible in that regard. And and wouldn't uh hamper the county's ability should rail ever return to 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 return it for for that purpose. Um one of the other things we are concerned with here, we know there's there's some lower areas in Dundalk is is to make sure that we're not uh facing increased risk in the future. Of of flooding out the trail or damage in that regard, and again, our understanding through talking to both the townships uh. Uh folks as well as our our transportation and Grace Alble staff is is that uh the integrity of of the trail and and the future rail bed would be maintained in that regard.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor Greg?
Thank you, uh through you Deputy Warden, uh just a question about the financial component here, Scott. The report notes the approved two thousand twenty-five budget. Is this one-time capital ex- uh expect expected cost that going into the budget or is this something that was um and. Continues to be just out of the operational component of the budget and. Then the last question is, what's the actual cost? Because the report doesn't note it.
Thank you, Scott. Um Scott?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Deputy Warden, um good questions, Counselor Greg. Um and and that piece is a little bit confusing, so. Prior to to uh this project coming forward at this time, uh for the past few years, uh the planning department has put in. Our Trails and Forestry Capital Budgets, uh twenty-five thousand each year for the purposes of surveying sections of the trail. Um that are still in the land registry system and converting them to the land title system. And and so there's there's sort of a a helter-skelter patchwork of pieces of the CP Rail Trail. Uh throughout the seventy-seven kilometer stretch that are still in the land registry system. Uh and so the purpose was to tackle a small bit each year with that twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh to get that converted properly into the land title system. And so um through this report and this process, we would simply be as part of that that twenty-twenty-five allocation of twenty-five thousand dollars. Um looking to prioritize those sections in Dundalk that need to be cleared in order to facilitate this. Um but the intent would be beyond those monies that are already in the budget for that purpose. Uh that the county isn't out of pocket any further expenses here with respect to these trail crossings. And so we'd be working with the township and and the developer in that regard to make sure we have. Uh the proper crossing standards in terms of the signage and the gates and everything else. And and quite frankly, this this surveying work was was work that we had already planned to do anyway. And and had that capital money in the twenty-twenty-five budget for that purpose.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Greg. Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you, Deputy Warden, and through you um partially answered one of my questions. Um through Mr. uh Counselor Greg uh with regard to cost, so the north crossings. Uh to the school and to the subdivision uh development uh could. And maybe these are questions for me to ask at our lower tier when it comes to our county council on the nineteenth. Um but perhaps um we can avoid that. The, would that be a developer, uh we we would go to the developer to um. Maintain those crossings, those gates, that signage uh for the lower uh southern crossings. Where you talk about lowering the the trail, it does, that doesn't mean that you're lowering it to go under the future Eco Parkway. Expansion, the truck bypass, it's just, you, I think you answered the question, Scott. That it's just a a minor lowering of that of that trail. Um so I guess my my main question is, is that Southgate assumes the maintenance and. Liability of those crossings uh going forward. And developer may be on the hook for some of the expense.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Deputy Warden, thank you for your questions, Counselor DeBreen. Um so basically, basically when we have a a new draft plan of subdivision, um you know, unless it's being built on an existing open and maintained road. Uh it would be the developers uh cost to to build those roads to a township standard. And then you would have something in the subdivision agreement or something in your own policies that talk about um. Maybe a warranty period or when the township would assume those roads, so for for the roads in in the north end of Dundalk as part of the Glenalge phase two and three. Uh most likely it would be some arrangement between Flato and or the school board uh to build those roads up to to a township standard. Uh and and uh and at some point in the future, um the township would would come to assume those roads and 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 maintain them in that regard. Um with respect to the lands in the south, you are correct, we're we're not talking about an underpass of the trail or anything else. My understanding is it's it's a slight lowering uh which makes the 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 crossings and the construction of that Eco Parkway. Uh expansion uh more feasible in that regard. Um with respect to the liability, certainly I don't want to do anything that's going to tread on quasi-legal advice. Um but my understanding is is that, you know, it would be the the uh the road authority that has the liability for for uh. What happens on the road, the county maintains the liability uh for for the trail itself. Um and and you know, then if there's the, if there's an incident that happens at the intersection. Uh you know, then I guess we would work together in that regard to 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 determine that, but um generally speaking. What I understand is is part of the reason for transferring these road allowances uh would be such that the the. In the future, the township would be the the owner and maintainer of that that whole section of road. Uh so that we don't get into a sort of goofy scenario where you maintain the road on either side of the trail. But the county owns a a twenty-meter stretch of of your road, so um yeah, that's in a nutshell what my understanding is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Barb. Any other questions, discussion? Not seeing any, is anyone opposed to this? Not seeing an opposition, that is carried. Moving on to our uh final report today, in an open session at least, and well, I know, second last for. Counselor Greg's uh consent item. But this final report is regarding the committee of the whole and council structure. Which I'm sure will be a very brief discussion. Mover in second, please. Counselor Eccles, second by. Counselor McKay, all right. Um. I presume, Madam Clerk, is this your item? Yes, it is, so uh Tara, please.
It is, thank you. This uh report comes to you today as a follow-up to the resolution that was passed at the January twenty-third meeting. It requested a report on the structure of our committee of the whole meetings and committee meetings. The recommendation within the report is for information only today, as the report doesn't make any recommendations on changes to structure at this time. It simply provides information on the current system that we use and um that we have been using since twenty seventeen. And as well as the previous standing committee structure that was in place immediately prior. Discussion at the January meeting appeared to focus primarily on the following uh issues or concerns. There was concern about a duplication of effort where a membership would consist of all municipalities, when committee of the whole. Already has representation from all member municipalities. When members are added to committees. When members are added to committees, cost isn't necessarily considered. There is a feeling, um, that counselors are sometimes missing out on the information necessary to make decisions at county council under the current system. And decisions feel final by the time that they arrive at the county council table or have been made at the advisory committee level. Um, there's also further discussion on standing committees and the opportunities they provided for more ful- fulsome discussion. And they provided a certain, um, amount of knowledge to the membership and their respective municipalities so that conversations didn't need to be revisited at the county council table. Gray County has utilized a committee of the whole system since twenty-seventeen, when it switched over from using standing committees prior to that time. As part of our committee of the whole system that we use currently, there are also various, uh, sub or advisory committees, currently eight, that make recommendations to council or committee of the whole for those, um, bodies to make decisions on. So I will just share my screen briefly and just provide the overview of the, just to give you a visual on the, the calendar and what that looks like for us currently. So the one that you see in your report and are you seeing a calendar right now?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, brought up something else. Um, and the one that you see on the, on the screen here, um, shows the typical month in our, our current system. So you have council and committee of the whole happening twice a month on the second and fourth Thursday. And then there's usually between, say, two or three and four subcommittees or advisory committees, uh, taking place as well. Um, that will vary month to month. Some will have more and some will have less, but generally that's kind of what we tend to go for. And those, um, subcommittee meetings usually take about two to three hours each. So there's also no minimum or maximum number of committees that any member needs to sit on. So depending on membership of, of those committees, some members will be attending and some will not be. Um, in terms of costs, counselors are paid a salary for council and committee of the whole meetings. And per DMs are also paid for attendance at sub or advisory committee meetings that they attend. Um, when we look back to the prior standing committee system, this calendar shows you the typical month. So there was one county council meeting held on the, the first Tuesday of each month. And then four or five standing committees, uh, me- meetings that varied in length. Uh, most were about between two and three hours as well. All counselors were members of two standing committees and then the warden sat on all four of those. So generally this meant three required meetings per month plus subcommittees if, if that was applicable. So sometimes there were tourism advisory committee or the economic development advisory committee that also, uh, may have taken spots on this calendar as well. Counselors were paid a salary for council and standing committee attendance. Uh, committee chairs received an additional per DM of two thousand dollars for that role. So salary covered one council meeting and then two standing committee meetings. And then your per DMs were paid for those subcommittees. So there are some pros and cons that were noted in the report as well. Those were, um, yeah. Um, with our kind of hybrid system that we have at Gray County currently, we use committee of the whole, but we also do have a number of sub or advisory committees. Um, so it is kind of a hybrid system, but it lists some pros and cons there for each system and its kind of true state. Um, with committee of the whole, you have a system that is made up of membership of the whole council and the results of the votes are taken or not final. Um, but there are recommendations that are forwarded on to county council for their, their final ratification. The pros are that that is inclusive of all members of the assembly. It can lend itself to speedier decision-making where all members are involved at the same time. Some, uh, kind of disadvantages or it can be time, more time-consuming with more members, members involved in the discussion. And it can be subject to some disengagement if members are not interested in kind of the wide breadth of topics that are discussed at the table. With standing committees, um, that consists of a smaller group of members forming a committee that has a specific focus. The advantages are that members can specialize in a certain area of focus and they'll divide the workload, um, up from, um, it all falling to, to one, to one body to have that more fulsome in-depth discussion. So they can also have sometimes more opportunity to take the time that's maybe needed to conduct in-depth reviews of some of the issues. Some disadvantages are that, um, they can experience some limited input because you're not getting the full perspectives of all membership. Um, there's some element of duplication of effort if there's, um, revisiting those issues again when they come to council, um, following that committee discussion. As noted earlier, this report today is recommended to be received for information as it doesn't evaluate which system would be better for Gray County, but it is within your purview as council to provide direction on a different, on a different outcome if you, if you wish. To make any evaluations on what system would be better suited for Gray County, staff would just need some further information on what preferences you have as a council and what things you, um, place most importance on. So whether that's cost or widespread representation, the speed of approvals and dividing workload, et cetera, are all things and, and more that we would be looking for your feedback and of consensus on about what to prioritize. There are a few small changes we can take, uh, immediately, which will hopefully help to address some concerns raised about the information flow that happens between committees and council. So the first thing that we propose doing is just moving committee minutes to items for discussion from the consent agenda. And then we'll actively discuss the reports and the meeting, um, that took place prior. And, um, that will give, will be more information to council and members of the public about why decisions and recommendations are, are being made to, to county council. We can also develop agendas by keeping similar topics or departments on the same agendas to provide a dedicated time and space to discuss like matters. And work is also planned in twenty-twenty-five to update the council compensation bylaw just for additional clarity. In twenty-twenty-six, staff will be bringing forward a review of our existing committees and will provide recommendations on which ones are perhaps ready to be dissolved or can be merged together with other committees. So it was determined that a switch was needed to a different structure of standing committees. There are some challenges that we might expect, um, though nothing shouldn't be able to be addressed in one way or another. We just wanted to flag some things to be considered, um, if council wanted to, to make a, a switch to a different structure. So over the past few years, we have been finding it increasingly difficult to schedule meetings just due to conflicts and, um, everyone being quite busy and having very full calendars. So that's in the back of our minds where, um, where, where there's a possibility that we're not able to achieve quorum. So most of the time business can't carry on if you don't have a quorum of a, of a committee or council present. There might need to be a delay implementing a switch just to ensure that meeting schedules don't conflict significantly with your local municipal meetings. Or we'd be working with your member municipalities, um, on a mutually agreeable schedule that would work for, for everyone. And we'd also be looking at building off the prior standing committee structure, but also possibly, um, looking at recommending a slightly different setup than the one that many of you are familiar with from the past. We'd likely want to revisit the need to have the warden sit on all committees and then, um, and look at the number of members sitting on each committee and representation as a whole. Regardless of the system that is in place, it's one of the key messages that, um, we just like to note is that county council does retain that decision-making ability. Uh, no sub or advisory committees we have right now have any decision-making capabilities or, and standing committees, um, generally don't either unless they've been delegated that authority. So if there are recommendations coming through from our committees, they're not finalized until they're ratified by council and are up for discussion, debate or further consideration until they're finalized. So, um, that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions if, if there are any.
Very good. Thank you, Tara, for that report. Are there any questions or discussion? Counselor McKay?
Yes, uh, personally, I kind of think the way it runs now is beneficial to all of us. As, uh, Tara said with, it'd be quite confusing to start, start to try to change meeting dates when for the past while we, we know our set meetings, we know our set meetings at the township. Uh, I think it'd be a lot of work for, uh, for, uh, the county to try to arrange all these meetings that would please everybody. So just my personal opinion, I think the way it is now, it's a good way it should stay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. Counselor Nielsen?
Thank you very much, um, Deputy Ward. Uh, just a comment for myself. When reading through the report, I do appreciate the, um, the item in there and what the clerk has brought up already this morning, the transparency of the discussion of decision-making and the idea of presenting the minutes under items for discussion. Um, I'm, I'm somewhat at a crossroads. If we put it under items for discussion, I do, um, value the time and effort we put into a committee meeting and council meeting. And so rehashing the entire agenda might be challenging, but it is important that it's not just ourselves as the decision-makers, but the residents of Gray County fully understand how we came to some of the decisions we did. I know that when reviewing the county's YouTube channel, the majority of our subcommittees are posted as, uh, full YouTube videos. So any council member can go back and re-watch the, the discussions and the decisions and so could our residents. But not all of them are. I know, um, uh, economic and development is difficult because it changes the location as well as the, um, committee, uh, community services committee isn't posted in our YouTube channel. I'm just wondering if, is it easier for, um, staff in the county through technology to try to make sure that all of our subcommittees are captured videos and discussions? That way anybody can review the decisions. Or would it be easier for a rehash of the agenda through the, uh, items for discussion?
Tara?
Yes, thank you. And I think we certainly could look at, um, changing or, um, having more of the committee meetings in a, um, electronic format or, um, posted to YouTube and, and live stream. We do have some limits on location. Um, we have the capabilities in council chambers, of course, but, um, whether or not every committee, um, meeting should or can be held there, uh, certainly something that we can take, uh, take a look at and maybe changing some, some current processes we have related to where those committees actually happen to try to have that available on our, our YouTube channel.
Thank you, Tara. Counselor Greg?
Thank you. And through you Deputy Warden, uh, just a couple of comments. I could be convinced to go either way here. I'm not, um, opposed to one or the other, but I do, I firmly believe that standing committees allow members, uh, much more opportunity to delve into information, to become more informed. Um, there's a real benefit in that some members, um, perform or excel more in a committee, uh, setting than they, they perhaps do, uh, as council as a whole. Uh, that's not, um, something that's new or, or something that goes out. That's been, um, fact for, for many, 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 many years and, and will continue. It's just the environment that, uh, individuals are provided to, uh, demonstrate their skillset. Uh, so there is a lot of, um, value in the standing committees in terms of, um, becoming more informed. I also think, uh, one of the benefits of standing committees is you actually create better politicians. Uh, committee chairs become extremely strong, uh, more valuable to the community, more well-informed, more able to speak to items, uh, to the community on behalf of committee and represent, uh, the commentary and, and concerns that were spoken of. So I think there's a real value to, um, having that standing committee format. Um, the committee of the whole is something that it's worked for us. I don't think it's an owner's time commitment to be able to make standing committees, um, function. Uh, I think that's certainly achievable. Uh, but the committee of the holes, I think we've, we've only kind of came to this discussion because it's morphed in the last two, two months in terms of who we're appointing and, um, I think it's just important that going forward, we remember that, um, we are here to represent the best interests of the Gray County, um, taxpayer as a whole, not our lower-tier municipalities. Uh, just think of the ward system for municipalities that still execute it. Ward system members do not then get placed on every committee so that they're contributing. You have to entrust your colleagues that they are endeavoring to move the corporation, the municipality forward in the best interest of the upper tier in this case. So I think that's important. One thing that has worked very well, I think, under Mayor Body and Hall and Sound is we structured our council meetings so that committee chairs report minutes to council. Uh, and they represent the conversations, uh, that were had and the concerns illustrated to both council but to the public. And I think there's a real value in having that opportunity. So I don't think that's a bad initiative, uh, at all if we incorporate more of that reporting back. Um, so those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else have any thoughts? Okay, motion is to receive. Oh, Counselor Eccles, go ahead, please, and then Counselor Nielsen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess I'm probably one of the ones that really pushed this forward and I don't. To Counselor McKay's comment about changing schedules and whatnot. Over the last year, two years, we've put into place, I don't know how many, you know, we're up to eight standing committees and a committee of the whole and county council. I guess red tape is something that bothers me the most is my understanding was when we went away from committee of the whole back in two thousand, or we went away from standing committees back in, uh, two thousand sixteen, seventeen. It was for committee of the whole, the deal. And it was a whole day that transportation issues were, you know, that was part of it. Planning issues. Yep. So everybody could deal with that and then take it to county council. And what I'm seeing is committees have been struck. Now we've got eight different committees out here going back and forth. Everything comes back to committee of the whole, then goes to county council. And the business community out here goes, time's money. And I realize this is politics. Time isn't a great thing. Uh, certainly doesn't seem to be because we've got these layers in place. And if we're going to continue on, you know, I'm suggesting we get, you know, get out of this, the committee reports come to council and then council endorses or approves. But it's the red tape aspect that is bothering me as much as, yeah, committee of the whole. Other than planning reports before lunch is about the only thing that really comes into play. What, we've delegated it all back to the committees. So one or the other. Um, I believe that we've got to make a change and I'm very much go back to making a committee structure. Tara put it out there. There's the calendar. There's this date, that date, this date, that date. We've had to make a pile of changes in all of our schedules because it used to be Thursday. Yep. Second Thursday, county council and committee of the whole. Fourth Thursday, county council and committee as a whole. And a little ad hoc committee here or there. And in eight years, we've gone from pretty much no ad hoc committees, second and fourth Wednesdays, and now eight different committees. Um, I, quite frankly, that's my point. It's one or the other. I don't think we can do a hybrid and be efficient and effective in governance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Tara, any response there?
Excuse me, sorry. Uh, no, not, not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Nielsen?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Deputy Warden. Again, the current motion is just to receive for information. Respecting what Kevin, which Counselor Eccles said. If we're wanting to give the direction for staff to move forward with some of the immediate ideas that they were presented, including bringing the minutes for items for discussion, just for clarity, is that going to have to be an amendment to the motion? Or how would we proceed with caring for with some of those ideas?
I'm going to say that the staff have the leeway to do that now, but I'll, I'll direct your question to the clerk.
Sure. Thank you. And my perspective is that that's something that staff will do in kind of our agenda design work as we put those things together. And they're, they're certainly there for, for further discussion. We can just do that moving forward and see, see how it goes and if there's benefit received from doing that. So I would say no amendment required to the motion.
My comment, if I, just a follow up comment, my comment would just be that perhaps a pilot test on the next two or three committee of the whole structures while we continue to discuss this might be beneficial just to see if it is, if it's successful and works, or if it's just more time consuming than necessary.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Body, please.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Just in a few minutes, I'm going to be bringing a, giving a notice of motion to add another ad hoc committee which would look at shared services and things, but I thought I should raise that now. So not, everyone's not wondering where it came from in a few minutes when I raise that. And we'll, we'll get that up to nine ad hoc committees perhaps for Counselor Eccles. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Well, to be completely fair though, some of those eight or nine committees are legislated. The Committee of Management for Long Term Care, the Accessibility Committee. I don't know if there's another one there or not, but nonetheless, they're not all ad hoc, to be fair. Any other discussion, questions? Counselor Nielsen.
Sorry, as I sit here and think through everything we're discussing, Deputy Warden. I think Counselor McKay made a very good point about changing during kind of midterm here. And I'm wondering just from perspective of the clerk, if no changes are made in this current iteration of Gray County Council, would direction be needed to bring the same report and discussion further to the next term of county council? To facilitate that same conversation at the beginning of the term rather than halfway through the term? I think there are some points there where we're kind of working in a system and whether or not county council decides to make changes, it shouldn't preclude the next term and next iteration of county council to have this discussion earlier on to see if there's a different method they want to have.
Tara.
Thank you. And I think over the last couple of terms, what staff and clerk's department have tried to do is early on in the term to bring forward a report of outlining all the things that seem to come up throughout the term, just as councils are kind of getting used to how systems are are working and going and then kind of midway through the term, a lot of the time, the same concerns or issues keep coming up and a suggestion to change to something different. And then by then, as you say, it's kind of too late to make any sweeping changes. So what we started to do is put together a report, bring it into council early on and just give the new council a heads up about things that kind of recur and things to consider as we're moving through the term. What changes you may want to consider making throughout? And that's again, just an information report, but usually speaks to things like the duration of the term of the warden or direct election of the warden. Sometimes the board system suggestion has come up as well, so that sometimes gets incorporated. So this is something that we can certainly add to that report. It's kind of a routine report that we bring forward every term.
Thank you, Tara. Counselor Carlton, please.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Just three comments that I have. One being, I think, the necessity for all of these committees. I mean, some of them are ad hoc. They have a limited time and then they're going to be finished doing what they were appointed to do. But it's the sheer volume of information that I think comes our way all the time now as counselors, both at the lower tier and the upper tier. And I somewhat reflect upon my father saying when he was on council, you could get there, read the report at council and make your decisions. And I think there's so much more for us than that level of information now today. The other thing is, and Counselor Greg alluded to this, the comfort level of everyone and the ability to have discussions seem to work better at that committee level than they do in front of all of council or committee of the whole. I like the idea of it coming back as topic of discussion at a council meeting and a report be given there. And I say that because we're now, especially since COVID, we are totally online. We have so many more residents watching us and they are looking for that information. And these are people who wouldn't come to and sit in council chambers to get that information. But now that they have the ability to watch online, they're there. And I think the more information we can bring to them to keep our residents informed, the more important that is. So I'm in favor of the current structure. I know it seems like a lot and I know I take on more meetings simply because my deputy mayor is still working full time and can't always make the time commitment to be here. So there's value in what we're doing now. I think we want to not lose sight of that. So thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Certainly appreciate Tara, you bringing back this report and outlining the pros and cons. Having been one of the members that have sat on both, I do believe the, the previous structure where we had the four standing committees is the best way to go. But upon reflection and thinking about what Counselor Body mentioned the last time we had this discussion, this is maybe not the appropriate time to make those changes. You know, we've got, we're over halfway through this term and, you know, as Counselor McKay mentioned, schedules are set and it would take us a period of time to make this transition. There are some members of council right now because of other commitments, don't have the same luxury of time to be able to dedicate themselves to certain committees. If we were to change to the, the old structure, it would be adding an additional day. Right now, members have a choice as to how many committees they're able or willing to sit on. There's no minimum requirement. So anyways, with that being said, I, I do think new councils should certainly look at how they want the structure to be. But it would be a lot of work for us to change it right now for a relatively short period of time. So those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. And through you, I, to Tara, thank you so much for the report and for the suggestions that perhaps the minutes of the meetings could be expanded upon during our committee of the whole structure. I am in favor of sticking with the committee of the whole structure, perhaps with more information for the public, for ourselves, who aren't part of those standing, those ad hoc committees. And, and appreciate that some of the eight or nine ad hoc committees will fall off. Others will be added as, you know, further consultation and direction or recommendations are sought. So I like the flexibility. I, I was always under the impression that our meeting, the Thursday, second Thursday and fourth Thursday go to four. We often are out before then, so we have a little bit more flexibility with our time reserved. It's a little bit more structured for us in scheduling our lower tier meetings and obligations. So I'm, I'm in favor of, of, you know, monitoring and trying what our clerk has suggested. So given that we can monitor and go forward, the, the regular meetings or the legislated meetings, we, we don't have a choice. So that is that those are going to stay and others will come on and fall off. So I'm, I'm in favor of staying with the current structure and look forward to more information and evaluating how that can benefit us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any further hands up. I will call the question. The motion is to receive the report. Anyone opposed to receiving for information? I see no opposition, so that is carried. Thank you all. So that brings us back to consent item six H, which is regarding a federal grant application for an active transportation fund. Motion to receive, I guess, is, is in order. If somebody is so inclined, Counselor Greg, are you, you're moving to receive? Is there a second or?
Oh, actually, actually through through you, Deputy Warden.
Yes.
Might I read the motion as I would like to move it? That report TRC W oh three two five regarding the county's application to the active transportation fund be received? And that the, and that an application for Gray Road one reconstruction project be submitted prior to council approval as per section two six, twenty six point six B of the procedural bylaw in order to meet the February twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five deadline.
Okay, so that effectively removes consideration of Gray Road seventeen B in that application. Am I correct in that? Okay. Is there a second or for that motion? Counselor Eccles has seconded the motion. Okay, Counselor Greg, would you like to speak to it, please?
Certainly, I know staff are, are online and able to address concerns. Some of the concerns I had is the language about the municipal class environmental assessment on both. These are, these are existing roads and the projects before us are rehabilitating the roads. So I wonder why we have to encounter such additional costs as going through municipal class environmental assessments on what should be straightforward projects in our ten year capital plan. We did have a delegation a couple of months ago before council. Very passionate and I think largely quite accurate about Gray Road one and the state of disrepair that it's seeing. I would note that the project starts at twenty third Street West in Owen Sound and goes northerly. This is a roadway that we are looking at exchanging or just downloading to the lower tier. But this is a roadway which right now the shoulders, the curbs are in poor shape as it leaves Owen Sound. When the county has commitments and responsibilities for urban roads, we need to have those at a level which is consistent with what the urban infrastructure around it should be. And right now that one is not, and it's certainly in poor shape as we heard from the cyclist a couple of months ago as it goes northerly into Georgian Bluffs. Alternatively, Gray Road seventeen B, which yes, I run through there, cycle it very, very rarely, as do most cyclists because it is a redundant roadway. I understand the need for catch basin repair, that there needs to be slope rehabilitation in some parts of it. It's not in the best shape. But this, this project looks to expend a huge dollar value and then add a three meter multi-use pathway as it states in the report from Highway twenty one to the intersection of essentially Nichols Gully, which is a four way stop for thirteenth Street West. We have so many great, greater needs before us in Owen Sound, whether it's, we've had a motion about Greg Abel's expansion. We have individuals that we can get into proper housing. That is one of our biggest challenges right in front of us. We have an aging population at home and an increasing paramedic need. And as a cyclist myself, this project does not serve the greater community in the same way as Gray Road one. And there's no way I, I think council should be supportive of extending essentially urban infrastructure into a rural setting. I can tell you as a cyclist, going northerly from seventeen B on what's, I think, the, the Harold Sutherland Parkway is terrifying for one block. It has shoulders for some. It's terrifying with aggregate haulers coming behind you. And that can be verified by the cycling shop owner in the Springmount Industrial Park. Nobody likes it. There's an alternative. If we can improve Gray Road one going northerly, then it turns left, goes up to Ben Allen. We are achieving the same and actually a better route for cycling enthusiasts. If, and we do need to improve Nichols Gully through reconstruction and, and storm water catch basin repair. As part of that, we can improve the shoulders for the individuals that are pedestrian traffic that are going through there, the more occasional cyclists, but there is a myriad of alternatives available to those residents just beyond the limits of Owen Sound that are more preferred than the immense amount of expenditure in this application to further active transportation in that area. So I don't think council should be supportive of it. I think it's also a reason why it's a benefit. I think in next week, the budget and finance committee is having the opportunity to look at items in the ten year capital plan. And I think this demonstrates why that's important, that committee and council has that opportunity and has that vision and line of sight into such a plan to arrange your priorities where they should be. But given the needs in front of our council and through the county, an application for Gray Road seventeen B for multi-use, I don't think is appropriate. And actually, if I could just comment one other, I'm just going to address one other item. If I go back to the master transportation plan, I'm going to read seven, section seven dot four dot two dot ten, Gray Road seventeen B. Gray Road seventeen B has been recommended for transfer as it does not significantly contribute to the overall objectives of the county road network. Gray Road seventeen B offers redundant service when considering the proximity of Highway twenty one and its role is further diminished by the recommended transfer of Gray Road seventeen based on the criteria and the principal assessments between Gray Road seventeen A and Gray to session twenty. That is directly from our master plan. And I'm just going to state that essentially this application is constructing a cycling route or a sidewalk to nowhere would be the appropriate terminology.
Thank you, sir. So we're going to give Gray Road one and seventeen back to Georgian Bluffs. No, I'm just, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I, I see your hand, Counselor Carlton, but I'm going to go to Trevor and Pat first for comments before I come back to you. So who are, Trev or Pat, you want to go first or?
Yeah, I could make a comment. Yeah. Just, you know, going back to the master plan and, and, and maybe kind of cherry picking some comments out of there. There was a lot in that master plan that maybe was agreed to. A lot of it wasn't. You know, we really haven't gone back to some of the things that weren't adopted. So to say it's a redundant road, there's thousands and thousands of cars and lots of pedestrians and cyclists that would disagree with you. So I, I, I don't know what to say about that exactly, other than both these jobs in this are in our ten year plan. The difference, I guess, on, on, you know, Gray Road one, especially the portion in town, say in Owen Sound is there is other pedestrian accommodations there. There's a sidewalk to the town limit. Now, north of town, there'd be the paved shoulder, which we always intended to do, you know, in a window that was appropriate. Seventeen B has no pedestrian accommodation, so it's not just about the cyclists. It's about all forms of active transportation. And that being said, even if we did our regular paved shoulder treatment, which we've done other places, everybody knows Nichols Gully has quite a bit of, you know, topography issues with, you know, a horizontal and a vertical curve that makes it, you know, difficult for cars to navigate. The only protection of a pedestrian walking behind a white line is the paint line, which is no protection at all. That was where we started the discussions where we thought it'd be nice to get as far as, and this is not just us throwing a carrot to help out Georgian Bluffs or anything. This is us trying to get the pedestrians off the road, out of our This is us trying to get the pedestrians off the road, out of our kind of wheelhouse. Um, we know the pedestrian accommodations are for uh, the municipalities. Um, but in in our mind, this was a project we wanted to do anyway, just to make um a better pathway for active transportation. This was in our cycling and trails as being a route. Um, but you know, we thought just doing a regular old paved shoulder probably didn't suffice. So that's why seventeen B is in there. And I don't know if Trevor wanted to add something specific about the job or not. Um, but but actually, as far as the grant, I will mention one thing. This grant is, it is peculiar in that it it kinda, I I'd be surprised if we got either one anyway, to be honest with you. It's very specific about the jobs not being a huge increase to the actual car user. That the the purpose of the grant is to basically get people off the road in their cars into some sort of active transportation. So we are tying it together with, you know, a couple of road jobs um, in our talks with uh, you know, the um people carrying out the grant. It almost seems like it's worded for more standalone job um, for active transportation, which are very rare anyway. Cause you're probably not gonna go and add a trail in the middle of nowhere without tying a road job in. So uh, maybe I'll let Trevor go on about the job a little bit, but that's kind of my thoughts, that it is in the ten year plan. Seventeen B was a lot sooner than the ten year plan than the other job, and if anything, it suits the grant a little better, so it's hard for us to leave that one out.
Okay, Trevor, do you wanna add something?
Sure, uh, yeah, just to speak to Gray Road seventeen B. Uh, basically, actually, for both projects, they're both Schedule A uh, projects as part of the municipal class EA process, uh, which basically means they're pre-approved projects. Now, there is um, caveat to that on Gray Road seventeen B. Unfortunately, at the north end, we only have a fifteen meter right away, which does limit us in terms of what we can construct in that location. Uh, so part of that process, we would be looking to potentially take some property um, to try to get more to a standardized right of way and then provide space for those facilities. Um, what ends up happening there is if there does need to be an appropriation process, then we would need to move to a Schedule B EA, which would have a whole another level of um, public interaction and have uh, PICs and all those different elements of a more standard uh, EA process. That being said, too, uh, what we've noticed through just conversations with patrol staff, um, residents and different people in the community is that there is um, there's definitely a sense of people using that for uh, either walking to school. So kids, you know, coming from the Georgian Bluffs kind of community to the north there, down into the uh, high school and the public schools. Uh, we also have some senior citizens who use uh, some of the grocery stores and the uh pharmacy there, so depending, it's not a huge amount of pedestrian access, but there is pedestrians in there. And of course, being on the road is uh, unsafe for us, uh, especially considering um, you have hills on both sides. Cars tend to drive pretty fast there at the bottom of the hill, and there's not the greatest sightline, so it does put pedestrians in a pretty unsafe situation if there was uh, a star or a trail that was off the road that would provide us with a little more safety in that regard. Uh, what also happens is if we can put curb and gutter and restrict the width of the road, uh, what that does is naturally slows vehicles down because they're more restricted than they would be if it was just a paved shoulder. Uh, and that curb and gutter with a narrow road tends to result in some slower speeds of drivers, so it does help in that regard as well.
Anything else, Trevor, or is that good for now? Great, thank you, Trevor. Uh, Counselor Carlton, you're next.
Thank you. Uh, what I'd like to comment about is seventeen B. So that road has been completely redone in the last few years from the highway into the four-way stop. So it would be from the four-way stop through to the top of Alpha Street. Um, the city redid Alpha Street last year and added an active transit trail. So this would link on to there. It is a road that is used by residents from the west side of Owen Sound out into Georgian Bluffs. Definitely students going into school, um, people going in to use the commercial spots on the west side of Owen Sound. And a lot of people coming in from the north on Highway six will take that to avoid the Spring Mount area and coming in through the Sunset Strip. So it is a key active transportation link. I would also comment that I think on some of these projects, we need to be looking not just at current, but looking at what that green and gray plan is for active transportation and looking out twenty years ahead. What are people gonna be needing for roads that far out? Um, I can agree with everything on the Gray Road one, getting the paved shoulders out there would be beneficial. There are some narrow sections on that road that do need to be widened. Um, without the paved shoulders, you're pushing the cyclist and walkers and running runners out onto that road. Um, the same happens to a greater extent on seventeen B. When you come down across that bridge, there is no place for the pedestrian traffic or cyclist to get out of the way of vehicular traffic over that bridge. So I would hope that we can move ahead with keeping the both roads in there um, to look at applying for the grant funding for both of them. So thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Sue. To just to be clear, uh, the motion, uh, as it's proposed, is just for Gray Road one. So if there's a request to add seventeen B back in, we'd we'd need an amendment at some point. Counselor DeBreen, please.
Thank you Deputy Warden and through you. Um, so I, from the report, thank you very much for the report. The environmental assessment is already underway for Gray Road seventeen B. We are making a conscious effort to uh, improve upon or include the active transportation piece when rehabilitating a road, which I see that the road needs to be upgraded regardless of whether we add that active transportation link. And I'm all for um, you know, applying as as Mr. Hoy has indicated. We may not get the, we may not get the funding regardless, but I'm I would, I would like to make an amendment to um an amendment to add back in seventeen B as proposed and recommended by staff um, and see what, see what happens. You know, the province is taking out cycling lanes in the urban centers, so uh, we'll see what happens.
Okay, so an amendment has been proposed to put seventeen B back in, uh, essentially putting the resolution as it was in the in the package. Is there a second here for that amendment? Counselor Carlton, thank you very much. So now we're talking about the amendment itself to put seventeen B back in. Any further discussion on that amendment? Counselor Boddy, see your hand, or you wanna speak to that or the original motion? You speak to the amendment? Go ahead, please.
There we go. I'm trying. Um, so i- i- it's it's gonna be a question for uh, Pat. Um, there's only so many dollars that ever get given out in these grants, and that's why we don't often get them. But I I've often wondered, do we water down our applications for something when we put in more than one? That uh, um, we don't show that we're I don't, do do we water that that down? Uh, you know, if if you ask for too many, do they kind of clear them all out? Or if you really ask for the one you need, are we uh, further ahead? Yeah, in this case, no, we're not, uh, we're not really. Typically, we ask for what we, you know, would need under the, under the uh, you know, uh, criteria of the grant. So it, this one is funny in that it kinda says, um, maybe Trevor would know better than I do. But it it kinda says there's kind of gonna be ongoing grants relating to this active transportation fund. So you can apply for different things. It's not like it's only for one year. It's over a course of many years. Um, but it seems like you can apply whenever you feel it's appropriate. So um, as it is, it it's quite a long window to finish the work. I think it doesn't have to be until the end of twenty nine. Uh, whatever job you put in for or jobs. So uh, but we don't usually try to, um, it's hard for us to determine, you know, what number you'd come up with to know that you're gonna get it, right? So we just put in what seems appropriate for the job.
Thank you, Pat. Trevor, do you have anything to add under that?
Uh, the only thing I'd add is that um, as part of the grant, it does say that uh, you can apply for any number of projects. So they do um, explicitly state in the grant that it could be a large number of projects if you so wish. But again, whether that dilutes the impact of your application, I would have to say.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much.
Yep, okay, thank you.
So adding back in seventeen B, my question for staff is sometimes we may change the scope of a project so that it fits a grant application. My question is whether the grant was uh, available or successful. Has the plan been to carry forward with the project as is being presented within the report?
I could speak to that. Uh, yeah, uh, the scope for both of these projects uh, would be the same whether we applied for the grant or not. Um, at least in the current state, again, that is subject to um, approval through the capital plan and that. But again, those were the initial scopes that we've developed the projects on.
Thank you, Trevor. Counselor Echols.
Uh, thank you. There was one comment was, we want to do this project. Is there a need to do this project? I guess that would be a question to Pat.
Okay, Pat?
Yes, I feel there is, like, you know, how this project got developed was kind of a lot of discussions on on the shortcoming of that road and and, you know, the increased traffic, the increased pedestrians, just the um, just the issues with it um, that we needed, we felt we should address something. It is a tricky spot because there's not a ton of room in there, as everybody knows. But that's kind of where we, you know, we started this well before the grant ever came along, but this is what we thought was the right solution.
So doing the stormwater, improving uh, a bit of the road for vehicle traffic is gonna cost us a million bucks, and it's gonna be two and a half million to put in the active transportation aspects of it. So I haven't seen that breakdown. And I guess that's what really concerns me. Is there other alternatives? Or is this the only way that Mr. and Mrs. Smith can walk from the north side at the four-way stop? And it is a four-way stop, so there are other roads there. This is the only way that they can do it. Is this the best active transportation route for us? Or is it just because it's seventeen B and it's very? And it's, and it meant aesthetically, it's very great going down through there. Now, quite frankly, I have traveled it, not a lot. I have yet to see a pedestrian on that road, thankfully, because of the contours to that road. But I'm just what is the cost to doing added in there? What's the breakdown? And is this the absolute best? Or working with the city of Owen Sound and the township of Georgian Bluffs and having that active trail come off of seventeen and go further to the east? And that being the active trail in the safest spot to take traffic, whether it's to go to the high school or any other place.
Thank you, sir. Trevor?
I can speak to that, uh, through you Deputy Warden. Um, in terms of the cost, roughly, basically from the report, there's four hundred and seventy-three thousand that we attribute to the cost to do the active trail, where the entire project is estimated about three and a half million. So again, that's about three million worth of road steward, or sorry, storm sewer enhancements, uh, more standardized uh, projects. Now, what we do find is typically with urban and semi-urban type construction, a lot of our projects end up being in about three to three and a quarter million dollars per kilometer. Uh, this project's about eight hundred and fifty meters, so it does align in terms of what we would pay for a typical type construction in this uh, environment. And given the topography, uh, we suspect it will be somewhat in this range. Um, otherwise, in terms of the other active transportation routes or potential routes, um, due to the kind of valley, the Potawatomi River there, there's only a couple different crossing potential locations uh, that residents could use. So seventeen B being one of the most direct to what we consider the west side of Owen Sound, uh, where the most of the commercial and uh, institutional uh, facilities are. Uh, the other option is using fourteenth, I believe it's Fourteenth Street and um, I can't remember the Georgian Bluff Side Street, but uh, the other hill there, there is a bridge at the bottom of that. Again, that is also a road that doesn't facilitate um, pedestrian movement very well either because it is very narrow and hills on both sides, and again, pretty unsafe. Um, otherwise, we'd have to move more towards uh, kind of the Marina side of town to be able to get people into the city. And again, there's not as many commercial um, options as there might be at the west side of town.
Thank you, Trevor. Counselor Greg.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of points I would like to take issue with. Uh, that's the comment about walking to school bus, the bus companies for the schools now uh, drives me nuts. We talk about climate change, but they bus kids uh, at ridiculous minimum distances. So I'm going to challenge kids walking to school from that rural setting through Nichols Gully. And I have the uh, ability, cause I'm a Strava member, uh, to be able to log into my Strava and I can click on cycling heat maps. And the heat map data on Strava shows more activity on Young's Drive, which is a side street in Georgian Bluffs, than there is cyclists that go through Nichols Gully. Uh, that's my comment. Um, it's entirely redundant to better alternatives. Uh, so that's just speaking to the amendment in place and certainly couldn't support in the face of what are so many other heightened needs in the community. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. Uh, certainly a good discussion. Um, I am concerned about the cost and the the real need for this. You know, I I've heard and Counselor Greg, as a cyclist, I I certainly uh, appreciate, you know, his comments and where the cyclists are actually going. And that's not to say the Nichols Gully is not being used. I guess my question is for Pat and back to the uh, urban rural exchange. And what meets the criteria of a county road? Does this truly meet the criteria of what we need as county roads?
Okay, I'm gonna neural that out of order for now because we're talking about the amendment to put seventeen B back into the uh, the motion as originally proposed. And 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 I'll come back to you, Counselor Mackey. Good question, but it's out of order for the discussion right now. Counselor Nielsen, have you got something regarding the amendment?
Yes, sir. If the amendment passes, or if it doesn't pass, my question is whether or not it affects the capital improvement plan. So currently, the the amendment in the app and what we're discussing is strictly just an application for a grant. If this fails, the staff have already suggested that the plan is to carry forward with these kind of projects anyways. My question is whether or not the discussion today or will affect or make changes to what staff are planning in the future. Currently, we're just talking about a grant application. If this is the theory we wanna move forward anyways, apply for the grant so we have the potential of getting some offsetting costs.
Apparently, we're talking about a grant application. That, yeah, uh, I I hope everybody heard that. Okay, um, Pat, please.
Yeah, I mean, to me, uh, obviously, if if, you know, people don't wanna apply for seventeen B as a grant as part of this, you know, three meter uh, multi-use trail, um, clearly, our scope would need to change in our ten-year capital as well then. Um, because obviously, if you wanna keep on the same scope, you you might as well apply for the grant. So um, I I assume we'd be uh, looking back at capital and figuring out if if it's worth uh, continuing with the project under the current scope or not.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, and I think I'm just saying what um, Director Hoy just said. If it's already in the scope of the project, I wonder why we wouldn't apply for a grant that would help offset the scope of that project. I think coming through there, we're gonna have to do something to get and there are cyclists and walkers on that section of road. It's a section I use quite frequently, actually. And so I see them maybe more than others would. I think at some point, something has to happen there and I don't see the problem in applying for that grant funding as a just-in-case scenario, so thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Counselor DeBreen.
Um, barring any other discussion, I'd like to call the question Deputy Warden.
Okay, thank you very much. Unless there is any further discussion, I will call the question on the amendment to put seventeen B back on to put seventeen B back on the table and re, uh, essentially reconstruct the motion as it was put, presented in the package. Okay. I'm going to call the question. Is anyone opposed to the amendment? That is carried. So now we're back to the motion as it originally was proposed with seventeen B and Gray Road One in the proposal for application of the, of the, uh, grant. Counselor Echols.
I've put forward an amendment then that, uh, if the grant application isn't successful for seventeen B, the project be taken out of the ten-year capital plan.
I think you're reaching on that one. Because this is, uh, simply about applying for grant funding. Um, Madam C A O, am I going the wrong direction here?
Um, thanks, Mr. Ward or Deputy Warden. I, I would have real concerns if we deviated from the process that we've had where ten-year capital projects are, um, debated and discussed as part of building the annual budget. If we're going to start pulling things in and out of, of ten-year capital at, you know, whatever time during the year, it's going to make it very, very difficult for staff to plan appropriately and, um, a lot of work could be spent, uh, doing designs and things like that, that then wouldn't be coming to fruition. It would just make it very, very inefficient for us. So I hope that's not something that we would, we would do. Thanks.
Okay, so that said, I'm going to, uh, say that up, that amendment is out of order. Any other discussion? On the original amendment, or the original motion rather, sorry. Okay, not seeing any. I'll call the question. Those opposed to the motion? Please indicate. That is carried. Thank you all. Okay, uh, now we are, do we need another break or are we good to keep? We're just down to the closed session. I am not sure how long that's going to take, but, uh, are we good to continue? Yeah, looks like it.
Mr. Warden.
Yes, please.
There is a, there is a very short presentation in other business as well as the, um, the council body's notice of motion right at the end.
Yes, yes. Yeah, no, I saw those. Thank you. Thank you. But the, okay, we'll, I'll read the motion. The committee, the whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section two, three, nine. Two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended to discuss, A, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local boards, specifically Georgian Bay Enclave. And B, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, specifically Georgian's Bay Enclave. Zero mover, Counselor DeBree, second by Counselor Patterson. Thank you. Anyone opposed to going in closed session? Not seeing any, that carries. Uh, Scott, are you Counselor DeBree? I see your hand up. Do you have a question?
I was just wondering Deputy Warden if, well, when we go into closed session, so we're, we've passed to go into closed session, could we have a five-minute recess?
Okay, we are, we did, we, we did adopt the motion to go into closed session, so I see it is twelve forty-six. So if we could return by twelve fifty, that would be good. We'll recess for five minutes.
Okay, we're good to go.
Thank you, Rob. We are now back in open session and I can confirm that counsel only to discuss those matters that were listed on the in-camera agenda. And staff were given direction. Uh, okay, uh, other business. Uh, I know Savannah has, uh, a matter she'd like to talk to, uh, Savannah, where? Where, where are you?
Might, it might be myself, Mr. Warden.
Okay. That would be excellent as well. Please.
I will share.
There's Savannah. Yep.
There's Savannah. Are you, are you okay, Savannah?
Absolutely, yes. You're, you're neat.
Okay, I will share my screen. Thank you. Is that showing properly for everyone?
Uh, I'm not seeing anything here.
Well, that's unfortunate.
There we go.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you, um, counsel. Um, given the amount of discussion, our, our earlier note of, um, Saturday being Flag Day and just all of the concern that's in the media and in the community related to the tariff situation with the United States. Um, we've prepared a short presentation to share, um, what we understand about the current situation and, um, just to highlight some of the actions that are being taken. I think it probably goes without saying that, um, we want to do whatever we can as Gray County to support our local businesses and to support the Team Canada approach. So as you're aware, um, the situation that we face currently is that there is a, a, a threat of further tariffs. They've already imposed a twenty-five percent, uh, tariff on, uh, Canadian steel and aluminum imports, which will of course have a significant impact to the province. And further to that, um, we're seeing, you know, impacts to the value of the Canadian dollar um, in relation to, uh, the US dollar. So what does that mean? What are the impacts that we can expect from this? Um, US businesses that import Canadian goods will likely either pass on the cost increase uh, to consumers or more likely look for alternative sources that aren't being tariffed or try to buy within the US. All of this will then have a negative impact on Canadian exporters. Canadian exporters in, um, to, uh, maintain their markets could reduce their prices to remain competitive, essentially eating the value of the tariff, but it's a significant amount and that will be difficult. Some may choose to, uh, relocate into the US, um, and leave Canada or put the majority of their production in the US in order to, uh, ev- avoid having their goods tariffed. Or if they're so fortunate as to not have a, have a product that's not easily replaceable like heavy crude or potash or something like that, um, tariffs. If the US importers can't find an easy replacement, um, those businesses will likely be able to, uh, weather the storm better than others. Canada, in response, may impose counter tariffs that which would in turn make US imports more expensive, uh, for businesses, products that move back and forth across the border for processing. Now we're talking about automobile production. We're talking about further processing of, of agricultural products. Um, will be more expensive in both countries. That in turn will drive up inflation. We've heard some discussions about, you know, alternate markets for Canadian goods needing to be found quickly. Um, we do have, um, many trade agreements. There are fifteen trade agreements in force with fifty-one different countries around the world right now. So we do have some of the groundwork laid for that as well. Um, inter- inter-provincial trade barriers are being reassessed. Making it, hopefully making it easier and less expensive to move goods back and forth across all of Canada. If the situation extends beyond a short period of time, um, and we've seen these situations in the past, so we're really pulling from, from that past knowledge or experience. Businesses end up, um, slowing down their production. They hesitate to make investments to expand their production capacity. Inventory levels rise if you're kind of trying to wait it out. Um, capital projects are delayed or canceled. What we could expect, um, for our own procurement is that though the supply chain issues, which have only really recently started to, um, recover from the challenges that we had with COVID. Um, those supply chain issues and the inability to get materials, uh, to do projects, um, could really reappear. And again, it drives cost increases for the product that is available. Eventually, you'll see layoffs. Banks will price risk and and tighten credit. And ultimately, what you see is business insolvencies. And really, it's not known at this very early stage about how quickly we could expect to see any of those things. But these are the concerns that we're dealing with right now. So the Canadian government as a whole is, you know, taking on its roles to try and, uh, avoid the tariffs happening at all. Um, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, they're working to bring together the work that Canada's twenty-three largest cities have underway to respond to tariffs and trade disruption and to provide resources to municipalities across the country that hopefully, um, will assist them in assisting their businesses. Um, FCM is actively gathering their members' concerns, so we understand how these challenges will play out in different markets. And FCM is also exploring the legal dimensions of buy-Canadian procurement strategies for municipalities so that we can support these efforts. The Association of Municipalities of Ontario is also working hard on our behalf. Um, they are trying to position our Ontario, um, municipalities to emerge strong from the disruptions. So they're working to estimate the fiscal impact of a trade war on Ontario's municipalities. Working with the province to develop, um, municipal tools to enable a buy-Canadian strategy and also making the case to governments for municipal stimulus spending, including investments in social housing and municipal infrastructure. Recently, we were asked, all municipalities in Ontario were asked, uh, to provide some data back to AMO with regard to the value of uh, infrastructure projects that we had planned between now and March of two thousand and twenty-seven. This was strictly, uh, capital infrastructure, uh, related to, uh, uh, transportation and public works. Uh, it does not include housing. Um, the response that we provided to AMO was that we have, um, twenty-eight projects planned between now and March of two thousand and twenty-seven with a total value of over fifty-five million dollars. And the municipal contribution to that, so outside of any, um, grants or Cs or anything like that, the municipal contribution was over thirteen million dollars. For Gray County itself, we are looking at our procurement rules and policies. Um, there are some things that we can do immediately. Um, the invitation to bid threshold, um, where we're putting opportunities out there and asking specific companies, um, to, to provide, uh, a response or a proposal for that bid. We can raise that bid threshold to the maximum allowed under the Canada Free Trade Agreement. Can do that at any time. Um, we can also, uh, assess all the furniture fixtures and equipment procurement for the Rockwood Terrace Build. That's the part of the project that has not yet been completed. We were just getting started with that. So we can do a bit of a pivot here, go through that list of, of, uh, required items and do our very best to ensure that we're buying Canadian wherever possible. Um, where we're not able to find a local or a Canadian supplier and we do use Amazon Business to procure some items. About ninety thousand dollars is what we spent last year. Um, we can change our vendor preferences or option to buy settings to Ontario or Canadian resellers on Amazon Business in order to, again, protect, uh, Ontario or Canadian business owners, um, to secure their markets. Economic Development, Tourism and, and Culture is also doing their part. And Savannah, do you want to come on and, and speak to this part, please?
Sure, absolutely. Thanks, Kim. Um, our staff have been actively involved in conversations with Western Ontario, uh, Economic Development staff so that we know we're aligned with all of the counties in Western Ontario. Um, also been participating in industry forums and global affairs sessions so that we do have an understanding. All that to say that right now there is staff consensus across the board that it's too early for formal outreach and surveys to businesses. We are having informal conversations with them, but until everything is known, it is too early nor do they have the time right now to dedicate to our questions. So when the time is right, we will engage in that type of work, but just not at this moment. Uh, what we do see our role as is very similar to the pandemic response where Gray County staff will collect and coordinate information on different programs, services, funding and policy direction from upper levels of government. Uh, and then we'll put all of those sources on a webpage which will be made in gray.ca slash supports. So we had a meeting on Monday with all of our municipal E D Os to have this conversation because their real desire is to be coordinated on this effort, very similar to what we did through the pandemic. So we've done it before, we can do it again. And we're ready to go. Um, the Business Enterprise Centre and Henry Burnet Entrepreneurship are coordinating efforts as well for one-on-one support because that is where we can have one-on-one consultation with business. Uh, Economic Development Staff at the county, we don't have the capacity to go down into the one-on-one support like we have in the past. Uh, so this is a way that we can still offer that to our business community. Then the next slide, Kim. Yeah, Ken. So Made in Gray. We had this available, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, we developed this brand. It has been an economic development brand all along. We use it across all platforms, uh, for our department. Uh, we had opened it up originally to agri-food businesses to support local food. What we'd like to do now, and we're in the midst of doing, uh, by this afternoon, we'll be ready to go, is opening that up to all businesses in Gray County. So we are going to make the brand fully available for download by all Gray County businesses to use as they wish, uh, whether it's on their websites, on social media, or right physically in their stores. There will be no limitation on the type of business that can make use of this. So all of this will be available on, uh, the resource page on the website. Uh, but we're really excited to be able to do this, given we've had it, we've been using it and it is recognized. So hopefully this will help uh, further support and localize the Made in Canada, Made in Ontario, now Made in Gray brand platform.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Stop sharing. Thanks. So that was our very quick presentation. We, we just wanted to make sure that counsel was aware that, um, you know, we're taking this situation very seriously and we're looking at, uh, whatever we can do, as I said, to support the overall effort and I'm happy to take any questions or uh, suggestions from counsel on this topic. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Kim and Savannah. And, um, it is an ongoing situation and very, very fluid, I'm sure. Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Deputy Warden, and thanks, uh, Kim for that presentation, uh, certainly warranted at this, uh, pivotal time that we're sort of going through. I got my flag. Um, I do want to say though, uh, we have a sort of, we're sort of unique in Gray County because in a rural area, we do have a number of farm properties that all also have, uh, commercial businesses. And I have been thinking about that as well because they, you know, use manufacturing material, but also build things to sell things, which are very important for their revenue stream and also for those that, uh, employee, have employees as well. So I don't know if there's any thought on that, but I, I, I do have a concern that, uh, they're going to be affected, could be affected as well. And I know that, um, you know, that's very, their businesses are very pivotal in their whole operation, so. And, and, and who they employ as well. So I don't know if there's any thought or anybody in that, in that situation to reach to or whatever. I do have a contact myself, but, I mean, this is sort of up in the air and as we move through, but, um, I know there's a lot of businesses and a lot of larger manufacturing companies out there as well, but those smaller ones are scattered, you know, throughout Gray County as well.
Thank you, Paul. Kim, do you have any response?
Oh, thank you. I, uh, one thing, when we went through this, um, in, earlier in the, in the two thousands, um, one of the things that we did from the Ministry of Economic Development and Trade Perspective was, and OMAFRA, was to really encourage local communities to at least understand who their local businesses were and who might be most at risk. And to have a, as Savannah says, it's early days, everyone is really scrambling. But if, you know, if it turns out, we, and we hope it doesn't, but if it turns out that this is how this continues on, um, having a conversation with the businesses in your community to understand whether there is anything that, um, is a challenge or an irritant or anything that could be addressed to help them weather the storm. Is it, is it an important gesture if nothing else? And so Counselor McQueen, your point about understanding that you've got And so Counselor McQueen, your point about understanding that you've got manufacturing um companies on farms that will have contracts that um may not be renewed or or perhaps potentially even could be canceled. Um, for us to understand the products and the cap and the capabilities of of those manufacturers so that, you know, I I expect if this went on for a long time, there would be um an effort to really try and connect those people to alternate markets or building up um sort of a solid understanding of of assets and and inventories so that we can do some of the legwork for companies to get connected to other markets. But Savannah, you might have things to add.
No, absolutely. That's exactly it. I think in a situation like this, especially where there is, you know, crisis unfolding or potential crisis unfolding, all of us have a role to play in being the eyes and ears on the ground because we're all having conversations with our community and our businesses. So I know all of your staff are very dedicated in doing this, and I know you are as well. So if there's an opportunity for us to be able to streamline, whether it's, if you're having conversations back to your staff so that we're bringing all the information to one spot uh so that we can really understand the lay of the land, what the trends are and where the opportunities might be. That's then where we can take the information, go to the Business Enterprise Center or go to Henry Burnick, who has expertise in uh exporting and I P and all of those things to be able to help look at other market potential um for our businesses. So maybe there is a better potential to actually sell and buy locally. Um, all of that work can be done and will be done through our tables, but it really is an all hands uh all hands in on this so that we have as much reach over the county as we possibly can.
Thank you, Savannah. Thank you, Kim. Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. I'll try not to be out of order this time. Um, Savannah, a question for you in regards to our Maiden Gray uh campaign, which is uh, you know, wonderful. People that aren't familiar with Gray County, should we be identifying that we are Canadian based or that Gray County is in Canada?
That's a great question. Through you, Deputy Warden. You will see on all of our new tags, especially with the Gather Campaign and others, it says Gray County, Ontario, Canada. So that is one of the pieces that we want to be able to help cement. Uh, so that will be in the literature as well for businesses, just to be able to put those three things together. Um, it's not on the logo itself because we understand at some point, these might be one inch squares on a grocery store um pricing shelf. So we can't get too detailed in the logo to be able to create that uh designation. But in all of the wording and what it is that we're trying to do with uh whether it is a flag or just the words themselves, absolutely. So you're very right, um, being able to place that.
Thank you, Savannah. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and through you, I'm glad that the the F C M is looking at the legal dimensions of, you know, Canadian procurement, if you already have, you know, pretty solid contracts and you might might be in jeopardy by breaking them. But uh, with regard to Counselor McQueen's comments about our on-farm diversified uses, our our on-farm shops. Um, my question through you to Savannah is I'm I'm hoping that our local economic development officers have created an inventory of contacts for those shops um so that there's there's an ease of connection and to just ask that they are easily part of the conversation, uh, that we don't have to start creating that list and or that inventory of contacts now. Knowing what they're producing, they are very quick at pivoting and able, because of their size, they're able to pivot according to market. So um, I'll I'll leave that kind of on the floor. It's really not a question, but just, just how can we help?
Thank you. Savannah, wanna?
Sure, absolutely. Um, that's part of the foundational work that has been done over the last year. Now, the lists are by no means complete. And as you'll know, for the communities who do have a lot of on on-farm diversified use, it's not an email list. In most cases, it's not even a phone call list. It's a, we're going to visit your door list. Uh, so that has definitely been ongoing. There's more that can be done around there. But the staff that you have on the ground, they are really truly wonderful and they have done everything possible to be able to make these relationships over time. And even as staff changes, it's that introduction back. Uh, and they're very good too at bringing us along. So we try and do that on both sides. If we're planning a visit, we'll bring our municipal staff with us. If they're planning a visit, they'll bring us along with us so that we can try and make a broader relationship. But I would say we're, we're working in good shape right now, but with thirteen thousand businesses in Gray County, we have a a long way to go.
Very good. Thank you, Savannah. Great discussion, and I'm sure there's going to be much more in the weeks and months and years ahead. Okay, uh, moving along, uh, we have a notice of motion, I believe, from Counselor Body. Oh, sorry, just hold on. Counselor Greg.
Uh, as, thank you for the opportunity. As one item of other business, I just want to, uh, Kevin, my member Echols uh touched upon this earlier. It has been noted to me um as a member of Budget and Finance Committee that the capital budget would be coming to the February meeting, which is next Thursday. My question or comment is this. Uh, it was an attachment in December when we passed the county budget, but we spent the whole day on the operating on the operating budget till about four forty-five. We wrapped up, we um endorsed the Minutes and Committee of the Whole and council passed the bylaw done. We do not have a format to examine the multi-year capital plan at this time. Um, and I just want to hear it verbally that we are committed to bringing that document forward next week uh where we can start to establish a pathway to examine items. Because as we heard today, we started items years down the road and council's not even aware of it. So we need something.
Kim? Please.
Thank you. Um, what you will see uh at Budget and Finance next week is an overview of the capital budgeting process and the um work plan for how various aspects of the capital budget will be brought forward for discussion. Um, we have always discussed capital as part of the presentations for each departmental budget with all of counsel. And so we will, I thought that uh with Budget and Finance, there will be an earlier opportunity to review all of that information in some detail over the coming months.
Thank you, Kim. Counselor Greg.
Uh, darn it, come on.
Oh, you're working. Nope.
Uh, that sounds positive. I would just note that we only examine the in-year capital projects when we have been doing the budget. So that's why I'm asking about our forward-looking lens. Thanks. And I think I heard the opportunity starting next week.
Yep. Very good. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Scott. Okay, uh, any other new business? Counselor Body, you're up for notice of motion, I believe.
There we go. I'm on.
You're on.
I'm I'm glad, uh, Counselor Greg didn't drop the F-bomb when he thought he was off there, uh, trying to get it on because I'm capable of that. Uh, I give notice uh that at the next Gray County Council meeting uh scheduled for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, I will move that the County Council establish a Joint Municipal Services Ad-Hoc Committee to look at a shared approach to address challenges and opportunities that we all face. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And I'm sure Counselor Echols will be just storming to chair that committee. All right, uh, very good. Uh, we have one motion left to adjourn. Counselor Hutchison and Counselor DeBreen. Anybody opposed to adjourning at one twenty-five P M? That is carried. Thank you all. Enjoy the rest of the day. Take care.